Was everybody reminded it was a 5 o'clock meeting today?
Yes, everybody responded to my phone call. The only one I did not hear from was Councilmember Burt. Everybody else said, yes, they would attend at 5:00.
In that case, I'm going to go ahead and get started because I am concerned about the meeting. And can I start without a full council?
You can, but it will not, whatever is discussed during this time will not be included in the minutes because it's not considered a meeting.
That will just be the presentation. It's just the presentation.
Which wouldn't be in the meeting anyways.
No, it is sometimes. They have the light on, so will they record us?
Yes, it will be recorded. It just will not be included in the official minutes. Would you like us to go call?
What do you think?
Pardon? Would you like us to call?
I need one more, and I know Liz is upstairs in a meeting, so...
Yeah, why, that's...
Wait, did she want me to call her?
Yes.
Want me to go again? Just tell me where she is.
Yeah.
I don't know where she is.
7th floor?
There's no... Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Berman, Councilmember Burt, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Klein, Vice Mayor Niss, Councilmember Price, Councilmember Scharf, Councilmember Schmidt, Mayor Shepard.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. And tonight, we're taking up a study session, and I'm sorry for the early hour, but we have a lot of agenda to get through tonight. So, we're doing the study session on the bus rapid transit for El Camino Real from San Jose to North County Intermodal Station, which is our University Avenue Station. In 2012, City Council held a study session on bus rapid transit, and in 2013, the city submitted comments on the EIR scoping report for the project supporting the VTA preferred option for Palo Alto of proposed mixed-flow lanes. This means that the impact to bus rapid transit in Palo Alto would have been minimal, just replacing the 522 Express Bus with a train-like vehicle with amenities like a Google Bus. However, they are now seriously looking at dedicated lanes up to Embarcadero Road, and we're going to be taking that up tonight. Tonight, we are here to receive the report from VTA presenting their options so that staff can prepare a letter commenting on the VTA draft EIR. In the staff report, we have it listed due by December 15, 2015. That's not correct. Originally, it was December 15, 2014, and it just got extended to January 14, 2015. When we come back to this, I will be going out to the community for comments and then limiting comments to the discussion topics which staff needs to have addressed to us tonight, which is dedicated versus mixed-flow in curb lanes, station options on El Camino Real, including Arastodaro Road, which I think is Maybell? Not Arastodaro Road, is it Maybell?
It's Arastodaro.
It is Arastodaro now, okay? California Avenue, and an optional stop at either Churchill or Embarcadero, and the impact of dedicated lanes. So, let me turn this over to Councilmember Price, who is our liaison to VTA Board, for an introduction to the VTA staff.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm looking forward to the presentation. As the mayor mentioned, I'm the representative for VTA Group Two on the VTA Board of Directors. And in addition to our staff, of course, we have two members of the VTA staff here to give the presentation. John Risto, Director of Planning and Program Development, and Steve Fisher, Senior Transportation Planner. The conceptual planning for this project took place during the period 2010 to 2013. The proposed project schedule and other important elements of this proposed project will be presented for us, to us this evening. And the comment period, as the mayor mentioned, will end January 14, 2015. So, if we could please have a staff presentation, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Shepard and Councilmember Price, thank you both for the introductions. John and Steven here from the VTA are going to give majority of the presentation. I just wanted to start by noting that, again, the draft environmental impact report just came out about two weeks ago. This is one of the volumes of it. It's an extremely large document to read. City staff is still fingering through it to develop our preliminary thoughts, but we didn't want to wait in having the VTA staff come and give a presentation to the City Council to, one, reintroduce the project back to the community because it has been a couple of years, and we wanted to let you guys discuss it kind of in a public forum, allowing you an opportunity to give us your thoughts and feedback so that we can develop a comment letter that we will bring back to you before the comment period, which, again, is January 14, 2015. So, with that, I'm going to hand the presentation over to John and Steve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaime and Mayor Shepard, members of council. Thank you very much for having us. And so, I know you've got a lot on your agendas tonight, so I'm going to try to go through here promptly. What I want to do, this is what I'm going to cover tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about the overview of the entire project, and we are going to hone in on some of the issues for Palo Alto. We're going to talk about the transportation and traffic issues because I think that's where a lot of the concerns and issues lie. We'll give some illustrations and talk about what these different options are for various configurations of the roadway. We will talk a little bit about the mitigations that have been, as we analyze the street situation here, that there are some mitigations that have come out of the evaluation, and then we'll talk about the public outreach. So, the overall project does run from the Palo Alto Transit Center all the way down to the SAP Arena near Dearden Station. So, it's a 17-mile-long corridor. It's a very long one, and it's our highest ridership bus corridor within the county. There are three, excuse me, four stations in Palo Alto, and they're on the map there as you can see from Arastodaro up to Palo Alto Transit Center. So, a little bit of project history here, just to get us back on track. We did visit the council two years ago to get some feedback on that conceptual level of project that we were looking at. Then, we did go to our Board of Directors and get direction as to what they wanted us to study, and that's where we came up with the seven different alternatives. Primarily, the alternatives are varying lengths of dedicated lane, and what we mean by that is that with the six lanes on El Camino, we would repurpose two of those, one in each direction for bus rapid transit. The mixed-flow is just using the outside lane. So, we did hear from our board, and we got scoping information and requests from cities and city staff about what to study. So, we have been doing it over the last two years. We have been meeting roughly monthly with city staff up and down the corridor, helping us to craft and put the methodology of how and what we would study together. We'll work through this public comment period. We will then take a preferred alternative to our Board of Directors in the spring and see which way they want to go with that, with all the input that we receive, and then hopefully certify that final EIR later in the summer. So, what this project is all about is, really is, to try to really provide a fast, frequent, and reliable bus rapid transit system. For us to really have that ridership level and have people want to take that bus, it's not, this is common sense. If it goes fast, people will want to ride it, and that's what we're trying to do with this whole project. It is, again, as I said, it is our highest ridership corridor for buses. We want to make an investment here. The cities themselves are making an investment in the corridor where their land uses and private development are coming in, and many of the cities are focusing that development around that area. So, we really want to improve the transit option for that corridor because of the investment the cities are putting in, as well as private development. We want to be able to have something, a project that is successful and actually supports the city's direction, general plan, zoning, and the direction they want to go, as well as meeting the Grand Boulevard initiative policies and initiative that's going on for the entire corridor. This helps to actually be a catalyst for that. So, here is the two different types of roadway configuration we're talking about here, and that is, the top photograph or simulation shows the dedicated lane, and it literally would have a painted median busway. So, you would really be, it would be distinctive in terms of being able to stand out that that would be a dedicated lane. It would have very much like rail-like stations, level boarding, off-air payment systems, and it would travel in that dedicated lane. And that would be, it's possible to do it almost the entire corridor, not all parts of the corridor really lend itself to that. But we've got alternatives that take it all the way from just doing it in Santa Clara and then extending it all the way up into Palo Alto, and that's the kind of the trade-off that we'll have to be talking about and the board will have to decide on. The bottom picture is the mixed-flow, and that's the other version of this. There would be bulb-out stations in the number-three lane as you count from the middle out, and that bulb-out station, the bus would actually stop in that third lane, and passengers would board from that bulb-out station. So, just to make sure you can understand that part of it. So, that is the illustration of the types of roadway configurations. Jumping right to what is important to us with regard to the investment of this project, its ridership, and let me walk you through the tables here. On top is the average weekday boardings for the entire 17-mile corridor for both the 2018, which is essentially maybe when this project would actually be implemented, and then a far-off projection in 2040. And the ridership does significantly go up, and as I said before, it's common sense. If you're going to speed up transit, people will take it for those reasons. If it's fast, frequent, and reliable, more people will want to take that system. We do have the ridership numbers for both the dedicated lane, the mixed-flow, and if we don't do anything, there's a no project as well. The bottom table is those ridership numbers for just the Palo Alto stations, so we broke that out to see what that looked like within Palo Alto. The project costs, it is a significant investment. Seventeen miles is a long corridor, and what you're seeing here is the varying lengths of dedicated lanes, so the cost increased towards the bottom. The takeaway here that is very important to us, though, in terms of operating this system, is that the operating costs actually are cheaper with the extended dedicated lane. And the reason for that is, for us to maintain that 10-minute headway or 10-minute frequency, we would be able to put fewer buses out there if we had a dedicated lane because they're just going to be able to travel faster, frequent, and more reliable. With a mixed-flow, we're stuck in the same traffic that everyone else is, and therefore we would have to put more buses out on the road to meet that 10-minute frequency. That's the difference here with those. So, the environmental document is in draft form. This is a list of the various technical reports that we have worked on over the last two years. I'm going to concentrate on the transportation and traffic and then the parking issues because that's really where most of the issues were. So, what we did do is we really did a very comprehensive review of the traffic intersections within the corridor, and we looked at 82 within the corridor, and then we went off corridor as well and looked at another 165, so it adds up to about 240, 240, or so. So, we looked at 240 different intersections to see what the traffic would be like, and most of the issues are surround the dedicated lane, so I'm going to get into that one. So, just a little bit about how we do it. We have a travel demand model that does forecast what both ridership would be, as well as what future traffic levels would be. And we use that for basically all of our work and all of our projects that we do this. And we have a number of inputs. One of those inputs is from the city's general plan, and your proposed land uses goes into that model, both existing as well as what you have in your general plans for long term. It also includes all of the roadway and transit networks that are either here in place or what are planned over a long period of time. It then does the work of calculating what that impacts are going to be with different traffic projections, and will there be a mode shift in terms of if it's a fast bus, will more people want to get on it? And then it also looks at that auto diversion, which we're going to get into a little bit more detail. And then all of that gets output into a traffic analysis that then we look at in terms of what does it mean in terms of delay? What does it mean in terms of impacts to all those 240 intersections? So, the next slide is a map of all of those intersections that we looked at all the way through the corridor, and we did that because we wanted to make sure that there was a real clear picture of what any impact there would be if a dedicated lane is chosen as an alternative. So, I'm going to walk through a little bit of the travel times, what we found in those travel models and the projections. Again, the top boxes and table is actually the entire 17-mile corridor, both for BRT and autos. And if you start all the way up in Palo Alto and you're trying to get all the way down to Dearden Station, right now, it takes about 85 minutes for our bus to make that entire trip. If we were going to be able to, and I'm going to go all the way across the table to the dedicated lane portion, if we're able to have a dedicated lane that is the entire length of that, we would really be able to save quite a bit of time and get that travel time down to 48 minutes, which is a significant decrease in that bus travel time. The autos that, if we were going to dedicate a lane to the buses, that means there's two left for autos, and there is an impact to the auto travel time, not a significant one, but there is still an impact of roughly four minutes, 3.7 minutes. And then we looked at just what it would look like in Palo Alto as well. So, those numbers are smaller but still significant in terms of travel time savings for that bus. Next slide, really what has been the real concern or many of the issues that have come up about an option of a dedicated lane is if you are going to use one of those lanes for buses only, that lane is no longer available to be used by the automobiles in that corridor, so what happens? And our travel model actually forecasts and predicts what that will do. So, what tends to happen is a portion of those trips, both now and in the future, will choose to get on that rapid bus. A portion of those trips would maybe want to use a different type of mode, pedestrian or bike, a very small portion. And then another portion of those automobile trips actually divert. Either they take a different route, they take a different time of day, but they actually go and disperse through the rich network of streets that we have in the corridor that parallel it. And that's what we looked at in terms of what does it really mean? What happens when that occurs? And what does it do to those side roads, those intersections that they're going to divert to? So, I'm going to explain how to read this. This map is what we did as a screen line. So, we took a look at every one of these intersections all the way through. If you remember the map that I showed, all of those different intersections. This is just an example of one of those where we snapshot of what would happen if we did a dedicated lane in Palo Alto, and where would that traffic divert? Where would it disperse to? And so, we did a screen line for just that purpose on these roadway on Page Mill, Oregon. And then the results of that are on the next slide, and I'll explain how to read this one. The blue, these are the, those streets that are the paralleling streets to El Camino that we looked at for that segment of the dedicated lane. And then, the model predicts what the diversion will be. The blue is the existing traffic levels on those streets already, and then the little gray box is how much is projected as growth, just a natural growth over that timeframe. And then the green is what the model projects as how much new traffic would be diverted from that dedicated lane portion of El Camino to that side streets and for that screen line. Of course, there's going to be many screen lines all the way down the corridor, but that's what this shows. So, in some cases, that's a fairly small or moderate increase in traffic levels. The reason is, is there's enough of the roadways out there to actually have that dispersion of the traffic, that one lane of traffic that is choosing to go a different route or a different direction. So, we did this for every signal, or excuse me, every intersection that we looked at, the 240 up and down the corridor to determine what those, what that issues were. And we can come back to this one. So, I also wanted to talk about parking and what the impact of parking is. So, we surveyed the entire corridor, as well as City of Palo Alto, and looked at both on El Camino, on side streets that were intersecting El Camino, and then off-street public parking. And then the bottom box is the utilization of those at a midday time period. So, we took a look at what was actually being used of all those 3,355 off-street, and then the other ones on-street to see what the utilization of those parking...
This is for the whole corridor or just for Palo Alto?
Yeah, this is, the top box, if you look at it, is the entire corridor, and then we did break out just Palo Alto as well, and then the occupancy is the same. So, one of the things that, if dedicated lane is chosen, one of the things that is a choice that we would work with city staff is, is it a higher priority to have on-street parking, or would you prefer having a dedicated bike lane as well, that dimension on the roadway? So, if there is a choice by the city to have a dedicated bike lane, then some of those parking stalls would have to be removed, and that's what this analyzes, where those would be, what would be done with that. It would require removal if the city chooses that you want to have a bike lane if the dedicated lane is chosen. So, that's still something to be worked out. It is an option for any of the cities in the corridor, how they would want to do that. Onto some of the unsignaled, and this is really just for the dedicated lane because we wouldn't need to do anything if it was a mixed-flow. It is the, how to deal with the center median, unsignaled or even signaledized, left turns within that corridor. If we were going to have a dedicated lane, remember those buses are running in that center median, we have to be able to control that left turn movements across the bus lane. So, it would require us to actually signalize or to close off some of those points along the way. And that is still something the city is, there is still some option whether or not any of those would still want to be signalized or not. If dedicated lanes was going to be chosen in Palo Alto, there would be the need because that, those bus lanes are in the median, there would be a need to actually remove some trees, but we would replace those as the buses transitions back and forth between stations and the running lanes. So, there would be a requirement for some tree removal on either one of those options, the higher one being the dedicated lanes, and they would all be replaced in kind. These are the traffic impacts. As we looked at each one of those intersections, there's a number of mitigations that we would work with city staff to determine which ones they would want implemented. The project would pay for all those improvements. There is a number that would, what if the city chooses, that would require a right-of-way to actually add a turning movement. That is, again, up to the city whether or not you would want to do that, but the project would, we would work with city staff as to which ones you would want, which ones you don't, and that project would cover the cost of those. I'm not going to go into each and every one of these. They're spelled out on every one of the alternatives. Final one. So, onto the last part of the presentation, and that's the outreach. We have released the environmental document, as Jaime said, about two weeks ago, and yes, we did extend the public comment period to June 14. We got a formal request from the city...
January 14.
Oh, excuse me, January 14, 2015. We have a number of public meetings coming up, and I'm going to jump to that one as well. Whoops. There it is, right there, yes. November 20 in Mountain View, both a morning and an evening public meeting, and then up in Santa Clara on December 3, similar timeframes. And we are visiting just about all the city councils as well in study sessions, so we're trying to get the word out to this and actually explain some of the benefits of the project. So, to us, really, it's, the objective and the purpose of this project is actually to really improve that transit choice, and in so doing, we would really, if it was going to be a large investment, like I showed in those costs, we really want to have a project that actually provides a terrific travel option, that is competitive with the automobile, and would have a very fast and frequent service that would run people back and forth every 10 minutes on that corridor, serving jobs in schools and homes and entertainment. It is, there's still a number of options yet for a city to consider in terms of bike lanes or not, and parking changes, and that we would be working with depending on if a dedicated lane is chosen. We are interested in hearing from all the cities, city council. The Board of Directors is going to take a very high level of input from... And then, the bottom box is the utilization of those at a midday time period. So, we took a look at what was actually being used of all those 3,355 off-street, and then the other ones on-street, to see what the utilization of those parking.
This is for the whole corridor, or just for Palo Alto?
Yeah, this is, the top box, if you look at it, is the entire corridor, and then we did break out just Palo Alto as well. And then, the occupancy is the same. So, one of the things that, if dedicated lane is chosen, one of the things that is a choice that we would work with city staff is, is it a higher priority to have on-street parking, or would you prefer having a dedicated bike lane as well, that dimension on the roadway? So, if there is a choice by the city to have a dedicated bike lane, then some of those parking stalls would have to be removed, and that's what this analyzes, where those would be, what would be done with that. It would require removal if the city chooses that you want to have a bike lane if the dedicated lane is chosen. So, that's still something to be worked out. It is an option for any of the cities in the corridor, how they would want to do that. Onto some of the unsignaled, and this is really just for the dedicated lane, because we wouldn't need to do anything if it was a mixed flow. It is the, how to deal with the center median, unsignaled, or even signalized, left turns within that corridor. If we were gonna have a dedicated lane, remember, those buses are running in that center median, we have to be able to control that left turn movements across the bus lane. So, it would require us to actually signalize or to close off some of those points along the way. And that is still something that the city is, there is still some option whether or not any of those would still wanna be signalized or not. If dedicated lanes was gonna be chosen in Palo Alto, there would be the need, because those bus lanes are in the median, there would be a need to actually remove some trees, but we would replace those as the buses transitions back and forth between stations and the running lanes. So, there would be a requirement for some tree removal on either one of those options, the higher one being the dedicated lanes, and they would all be replaced in kind. These are the traffic impacts. As we looked at each one of those intersections, there's a number of mitigations that we would work with city staff to determine which ones they would want implemented. The project would pay for all those improvements. There is a number that would, what if the city chooses, that would require a right-of-way to actually add a turning movement. That is, again, up to the city whether or not you would want to do that, but the project would, we would work with city staff as to which ones you would want, which ones you don't, and that project would cover the cost of those. I'm not gonna go into each and every one of these, they're spelled out on every one of the alternatives. Final one. So, onto the last part of the presentation, and that's the outreach. We have released the environmental document, as I said, about two weeks ago. And yes, we did extend the public comment period to June 14th. We got a formal request from the city.
January 14th.
Oh, excuse me, January 14th, 2015. We have a number of public meetings coming up, and I'm gonna jump to that one as well. Whoops, there it is, right there, yes. November 20th in Mountain View, both a morning and an evening, public meeting, and then up in Santa Clara on December 3rd, similar timeframes. And we are visiting just about all the city councils as well in study sessions. So, we're trying to get the word out to this and actually explain some of the benefits of the project. So, to us, really, it's, the objective and the purpose of this project is actually to really improve that transit choice. And in so doing, we would really, if it was gonna be a large investment, like I showed in those costs, we really wanna have a project that actually provides a terrific travel option, that is competitive with the automobile, and would have a very fast and frequent service that would run people back and forth every 10 minutes on that corridor, serving jobs in schools and homes and entertainment. It is, there's still a number of options yet for a city to consider in terms of bike lanes or not, and parking changes, and that we would be working with, depending on if a dedicated lane is chosen. We are interested in hearing from all the cities, city council, the board of directors is gonna take a very high level of input from cities in terms of what their choice is, and then finally make a decision later in the spring. So, really important to us to hear whether or not the, what are the options are that are being considered and preferred by cities. And thank you very much, we're more than happy to answer some questions.
Okay, and I just wanna remind everybody who's listening and who's here that city councils, this city council is gonna be making a comment, and now, we might not have it on the 8th, we might have our comment letter on the 15th, because you won't have a council meeting in time to do it past that.
Thank you, Mary Shepherd. I think after we get the feedback tonight, sometime between now and the 15th, we'll come back to the council, but definitely before January 15th.
Sure. Then also, for those in the audience that would like to make their own comment, can we go to the VTA website? I have the site here, it's VTA Environmental Planning Department, 3331 North First Street, Building B-2, San Jose, 95134. Attention Christina Jarwoski. Is it also on your website, so people can make their comments directly and not have to rely on Palo Alto City Council? Although, we will be making our comments directly related to the comprehensive plan, our municipal code, and all of the other things that are featured that could be compromised with this coming into El Camino Real. So, okay. And this is a study session, so I'll be taking public comment after the study session, unless anybody would like me to go ahead and take it now. I have two cards right now.
Could I ask?
Wanna take it now?
Could I ask one question?
Well, I think Vice Mayor Niss was gonna ask a question, so.
There have already been comments in the press about how city council members are responding. My recollection is this is a state highway.
That's correct.
What influence do we have?
Well, it.
Do we simply just have influence? I don't think we have any power over that road, am I correct?
It's a state route, and ultimately, Caltrans has to approve any improvements to that road, anything done to it. So, we are working with Caltrans on this project, and actually have a co-op agreement with them already for this portion of the project, the environmental process. But ultimately, they're gonna have to be able to approve whatever we're gonna select as a locally preferred alternative.
So, my comment then is the same. We are not the governing board for this road, and regardless of our comments, the decision will be made by Caltrans.
Yes, it's also because VTA is the implementing agency, where there's a decision to be made by the VTA Board of Directors as to what to propose, and then ultimately, it is a state route, and Caltrans will have to approve whatever we do.
But something must be proposed in order for a BRT to eventually occur.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we're gonna go out for a public comment. So, colleagues, can you prepare your comments for staff, so that we can get them all listed appropriately? And staff also, you'll take comments from us later on, as we digest this and go into the EIR ourselves, if that's what we'd like to do. Okay, in that case, let's start with our public. First, a speaker will be Adina Levin, to be followed by Herb Borak, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, council members and staff. Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain, and having just been diving into the EIR. So, before the information came out, I had lots of questions about this project and what the impact versus the benefits would be. And really looking at the data, it's really pretty striking. If you look at a trip that is typical for a Palo Alto reasonable trip, the VTA presentation showed the travel time from Palo Alto to San Jose on the bus or driving, which basically nobody does. The average trip for a bus or driving is five to seven miles either way. And if you're going from downtown Palo Alto to, for example, San Antonio, with the, you know, keeping things as they are, the bus will take 20 minutes, driving will take 10 minutes. If the mixed-flow BRT is implemented, that bus travel time goes down by one minute, from 20 to 19 minutes. It's nowhere near competitive with driving. With the dedicated lane BRT, the bus time goes from 20 minutes to 10 minutes. It's time-competitive with driving, and that drive time goes up by one minute. So, with the city's TDM strategy saying, "We wanna have alternatives that are competitive so more people take them," this is really something that should be looked at with the information to say, "Is this something that helps the city achieve that strategy?" There's some kinda scary numbers, looking at the vehicle level of service going to F and so on, but the end result is, for a driver, it takes their trip from 10 minutes to 11 minutes, and the end result is a bus that's time-competitive with driving. And what we see with ridership around the country, whether it's Eugene, Oregon, or Cleveland, or Los Angeles, when they have BRT projects and you get to time-competitive with driving, ridership goes up beyond forecast, which is what we saw with Caltrain. When Caltrain introduced the baby bullet, that was very time-competitive with driving, and that's when ridership more than doubled, starts to spike. So, I would urge you to look at that information and what kind of benefits that we would get with making the bus time competitive with driving becoming an option for many more people. Before I go, this is not competitive with Caltrain, it has more than double the number of stops. So, they're more frequent together. Thirty-four percent of Palo Alto's residents live within a half a mile of El Camino, so it could serve potentially a lot of people, not only in Palo Alto, but workers from Mountain View and Sunnyvale coming to work here and not park on the streets, 'cause they're taking the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Borak to be followed by Vanessa Warehart.
I'm pleased that you will be getting a draft letter from staff in this, in December, which gives you an opportunity to deliberate and have staff come back to you in January with a final letter. In regard to whatever influence we have, it's the same as with high-speed rail. We have the ability to comment on it and take action if necessary, if the EIR is not adequate. And we're also responsible for mitigations in Palo Alto of the intersections on Alma Street. And I believe that the EIR should compare the demographics of prior surveys that indicated the typical person who rides the bus is poor and doesn't own a car. So, the question is, who are going to be the new customers? In terms of speed, the bus will be going at 21 miles per hour, and you need to take into account origin and destination. You know, for people who both live and work on El Camino, or who have someplace to go to and also live on El Camino, then the previous speaker's discussion of competitive times might make sense. But most people who are using, who use El Camino, who drive on it, are coming from someplace else. And the question is, how are they gonna get to the bus if they're not driving to it? In terms of the dedicated lanes, there should be some analysis of the right-turn lanes onto and off of El Camino by other vehicle traffic that would have to be crossing the bus rapid transit lanes. And finally, on the indicated intersection mitigation on Alma Street, in terms of Kingsley. Kingsley is interrupted by Embarcadero Road. I don't understand the reason for having a traffic signal there. And similarly, Melville is also interrupted by Cul-de-sac and Embarcadero Road. So, what is the purpose of having traffic signals there? In terms of Addison and Lincoln, Lincoln is the preferred way of making a right turn off of Alma Street now for northbound traffic. And I don't know, certainly, traffic light wouldn't help them, and other traffic already has traffic lights at Homer and Channing to get on and off of Alma Street. So, I don't understand the need or the wisdom of having these additional signalized traffic intersections on Alma Street as mitigations. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa Warehart.
My name's Vanessa Wareheit.
Thank you.
I'm a longtime, off-and-again, on-again Palo Alto resident. I have a child in the Palo Alto School District. And I, when I was an off-again Palo Alto resident, lived in the City of Vancouver, British Columbia, where I took my son on the bus very regularly, on a daily basis, and he pretty much never rode in a car until we moved back to California. It really radically improved our quality of life to have regular, clean, comfortable, frequent, fast bus service. It's something we miss terribly, living here, and it's, I find it somewhat shameful that the wealthiest and most innovative city in California can't have this. And when I see that picture of dedicated lane transit, I see hope. And when I see that, whatever the other one's called, mixed flow, I see despair. I currently work, do a lot of work with climate change action, and I understand just how dire the situation is, and we need that top view implemented immediately, if not sooner. My only question is, how can we get SAM Trans to do the same thing, so that we can go north as well as going south? I also wanna strongly encourage you to implement whatever you can to add bicycle lanes. We need this for our families and for kids and for everyday people who get around on bicycles and need a safe way to do it. That's the fastest way. We have the largest single emissions in our community, greenhouse gas emissions, come from transportation, and we need to do everything in our power to fix that ASAP. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to take comments from colleagues now, and we are 10 minutes to six. So, if it's possible to keep your comments concise into the items that are illustrated tonight, and we can also get comments later on to staff as well. Councilmember Price.
Thank you for your presentation, thank you to the community. I have a few questions. The first one is, in the part of your presentation where you talk about corridor mitigations, intersection mitigation, and off-corridor mitigation, I'm making the assumption that those are largely under the dedicated lane scenario, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And will there be any mitigations if we had a mixed-flow option that was the locally preferred alternative chosen by VTA Board?
There will be no traffic mitigations like that, no.
Got it, okay. And also, at this point in the planning, the features of the proposed vehicles, will those be more similar to the existing express bus vehicles in their features and elements, or is it premature to talk in those terms?
The, if you're referring to our red buses that are on the highway-based express buses, and those are more for longer trips, so you actually see the high-back seats and that sort of thing in those buses, this will be more of a more regular bus seating configuration. It will have bike racks inside and exterior as well, so, 'cause we expect a lot of bicycle users to do it. So, it's gonna look, and it'll have Wi-Fi. Thank you, Steve.
Got it.
So, it's gonna be more of what it looks like today, but a lot newer, and there will be those extended buses, 60-footers, where they're articulated, as I think I had a photograph of that bus.
Okay, and last quick question is, if we, if the locally preferred alternative ends up being, for this segment, a mixed flow, and bulbouts are part of that scenario, what would be the constraints if we were in the future to suggest that, let's say it's very successful, and we wanna move towards a dedicated lane option? A, is that feasible? And B, what would be the cost impacts down the line if that were the scenario?
Of course, I don't have the cost for that scenario, but the cost would include probably the removal of those outside bulbouts, and then, of course, the construction of the interior median busway and the stations that are now in the median of the roadway. So, there's a cost to remove. Is it possible to do that? Yes, it is. It's just a matter of that you're now spending twice for, you know, the same sort of project. So, that would be something that certainly the board would have to take into consideration, whether or not that's the type of thing we would want to do. It is a significant investment, as you saw those costs that we put forward up there. That was a dedicated lane and a mixed-flow cost, they're different. But it's a significant investment in the corridor, and that would be certainly something the board would scrutinize in terms of whether or not you wanna phase it like that and then have a removal cost in the future.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scharf?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So, just so I'm understanding this, in the IR, you have, on I guess page eight of your presentation, you have a number of project alternatives, you have the no-build, the mixed flow, and then you have the dedicated lanes to particular places. So, you have it to showers, you have it to Highway 85, and you have it to Embarcadero. So, it wouldn't go further than Embarcadero. Is that correct?
Your question was on the dedicated lane portion of it?
Yes, on the dedicated lane. So, the dedicated lane, so we'd have the same number of lanes under these scenarios, no matter what, up to Embarcadero.
That's right.
Okay. So, I don't know where, why, my understanding of this was that there was no serious consideration of coming into Palo Alto with the dedicated lane, that you were gonna stop at it showers, and that VTA had actually agreed to that? That was my understanding, and that it wasn't on the table to come through Embarcadero.
We actually got a request from the City of Mountain View to actually study dedicated lanes further in their city and then into Palo Alto. So, it was actually, came from city during the scoping period, so we added the alternative.
So, I'm very concerned with the presentation and the time we have here. It seems that, in the staff report, it talks about how our levels of services will fall, and that's on page seven of the staff report, on page three, page seven of the packet book. I don't see any discussion of the impacts in terms of the levels of services. I see numbers here in terms of time, but I guess I'm having a hard time understanding exactly how that would work, and why we just have, what the real impact of traffic would be on Palo Alto. I mean, maybe you could address that for us?
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. Based off the analysis we've done so far, and we'll definitely do more before we come back to you with a comment letter, we are seeing that there are significant impacts from the standpoint of level of service or delay to vehicle traffic along certain corridors, specifically the intersections that cross Alma. So, intersections like Alma and Charleston, Alma and Meadow, Alma and Churchill, where, you know, traffic may likely divert off of El Camino Real to try and get to a parallel path, in this case Alma Street, those would be exasperated as part of the analysis. You know, I don't have the numbers with me to the degree, but we do know that those intersections are impacted to a level-service F scenario as part of the analysis the VTA has provided.
So, it seems really bad for Palo Alto to come through Palo Alto like that. It seems like we're much better off with it ending at showers.
Well, what we're providing is the evaluation of those two different alternatives, and there will need to be a decision to do nothing or to do one of those two alternatives. What we were trying to highlight was the, from the transit perspective, that ridership and how effective that bus with a dedicated lane really becomes is an important one, and it was pretty significant.
But that's what's missing in the presentation. I don't see the presentation of what these numbers look like if you have a dedicated lane to showers, and then you have mixed flow from showers on. What you're showing us is either mixed flow the whole way or dedicated the whole way. And that's not really useful to Palo Alto.
Well, for the purpose of the short period of time for the presentation, we did have to summarize a lot of this, but.
But frankly, that's not useful to us. I mean, there's no, I mean, 'cause the question for us is, do we gear up and, you know, form a committee that looks at this and says, "Hey, we don't want this in Palo Alto this way. We're not gonna let the VTA Board of Directors, we're not gonna allow you to put mitigations on Alma. We frankly, maybe we should go into closed session, look at hiring an attorney," you know, "take a really strong approach at the EIR level right now, because that's our window." And our window is closing Jan- the IR level right now, because that's our window. And our window is closing January. And you've given us no information about, okay, well, what is the difference if this comes all the way through Palo Alto, and if this, or this stops at showers?
Yeah, all, all of that is actually in the EIR for, but the, we weren't really able to get into all the details. But certainly, we can provide any of that clarification, and certainly staff can ask us questions. We can get that in more detail if there's any of those specifics. But it, all of that, level of service, travel delay, traffic impacts and diversities are all in the EIR. It's just a matter of pulling that out.
I wanted to, but I'll take the floor here for a minute too, because what we are going to do is ask staff to prepare that comment letter so that that can be measured. And then it will come back after they measure it in the EIR. And then next year, when they release the draft EIR, you can evaluate exactly that. So if you want staff to make that measurement and to ask those questions, that's what we're trying to get to staff right now.
Right. Now, that's what I want from staff. I mean, so you're going to come back to us with the comment letter before. And you're going to focus on all the negative impacts that could occur. And we're going to look at if it stopped at showers, and if it goes all the way through Palo Alto. And I gather the section is, I'd also like to know what it means if we would not approve. It's, it's against our policy to have new lights on Alma, which seems to be the primary mitigation here. So the question in my mind is, if we were, as the city council said, we have a policy, we're not going to approve that, how can they put that as mitigation in the EIR, since it's against current policy? Do they have a, I mean, wouldn't they have to do overriding concern to do that? Because that's not necessarily, that's not on the table.
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. You're, you're right on all the points. I think that, what John was definitely trying to say is that the EIR does have a lot of those questions that you're asking. We'll come back to you with our comment letter and try and summarize those some more in greater detail. The option you're referring to, just so that you're aware, and for the people at home, it is alternative, what the VTA calls alternative 4B. And that's the option that shows the dedicated lane ending at Mountain View in showers, and then returning back to a mixed flow in Palo Alto. And so, but again, if we were to extend beyond all the way, dedicated lanes to Palo Alto, that's where we begin to see some significant impacts. And so now that we've seen the impacts ourselves, we have to have that internal discussion as well with the VTA for specific things like the potentially larger impacts along Alma Street with new traffic signals.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
Well, Councilmember Scharf covered much of the things that I wanted to cover. And I'm very concerned about our time tonight, because we have a tendency to spend a lot of time on items that are early on the agenda and then rush through things at the end. So I'm going to suggest to my colleagues that regardless of who's speaking or who's not, that we stop at 6:15. And further into that, I will not make any further comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Berman.
Well, along with what Councilmember Klein just suggested, I think Councilmember Scharf pointed out a lot of concerns. You know, you're, the, the proposal for dedicated lanes removes parking spots, it removes trees, and it increases the time travel for cars. Three super unpopular things in Palo Alto. So not to say, you know, I haven't decided personally how I'm going to come down on this, and, and I'm sure a lot of other folks aren't, but the one thing I can guarantee is, there are going to be a lot of pointed questions. And I think it would have been really helpful to have at least gotten this information a little bit ahead of time, as opposed to, to at places, because it's always hard to digest a lot of the information. And then clearly, there's a lot of additional information that we'll ask staff to, to pull out of the, the draft EIR and, and come back to us with. So I, I think, you know, a, a lot of the concern falls on, on what impact this is going to have on our intersections. You know, we do have to be realistic about the fact that the Bay Area is growing, and it's going to continue to grow. And, and the population increases out to 2040 are, are large. And, and we have to prepare for that. But we also have to make sure that we, you know, are, are very diligent in kicking the tires on the numbers and the projections. So, you know, without diving into specific data points, you know, I'm going to put a tough task on staff, which is kick the tires on all the data points. But you, you know, in particular, the LOS information, and especially for the impact that it's going to have off of El Camino, because that's going to be incredibly important to our community and something that we're going to have to analyze very closely before we make a decision.
Okay, I'll jump in here. First off, we have an updated comprehensive plan. So how will this be considered, since we have a master plan, but it's not necessarily recognized? And we haven't updated some of the things that you've illustrated right here that are in our comprehensive plan. So we have, how does the traffic work with our traffic models that we have right now, which have not been updated? And the, and how will they be influenced with the EIR that's going on right now?
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd. So we actually use the same travel forecast model that the VTA does. So ultimately, whenever the VTA Board takes a, a final action, and that becomes a permanent element of the travel forecast model, we'll have that same data, data point for future analysis. I did want to make the point, I think in response with the Vice Mayor Niss's question from earlier, the council has a very influential position and statement to whatever happens in this project, specifically because we have VTA representation. And so, you know, the, our VTA Board will want to hear whatever position the city council here Palo Alto wants to take and make that into consideration as part of its final decision. So we also have permitting authority from the standpoint of when construction happens, it's on adjacent streets in Palo Alto, we issue those permits as well. So we have a lot of authority and a lot of influence in the project as the decisions are being made.
All right. Thank you. So you're saying that the data points are the change, which then we can interpret with, as we update our comprehensive plan. But on the other hand, we still haven't done some of our policy updates. So also, the loss of parking spots, we have an in-loof fee for when we, somebody tries to do something and they don't park for it, they give us an in-loof fee. Do we have any teeth in getting something like that if, in fact, we lose parking in this with the decisions that are made eventually?
We don't have a, a parking in-loof fee outside of the, of the downtown district. It would be something that we would need to consider for future policy as part of our comprehensive plan if we want to expand that outside of downtown.
But we'd have to have already had that in place right now. Okay. Growth formulas, I'm assuming it's A-BAG growth formulas that you're using. I'm looking to make sure that you have comments on the Alma Street mitigations as well, and how this aligns with the bicycle master plan, in case we do want to look at a bike lane. I know that we have other alternate routes instead of El Camino, and yet at the same time, we've been given an awful lot of emails from the environmental community that they would, and the biking community, that they would like to see dedicated lanes and the bike lane, which would wipe out parking, the way I understand it. And then I agree with Councilmember Scharf. I want to make sure that we do take a look at the impacts to traffic on El Camino Real, which I do see at a timing level here, as general, but I'm sure that will come back in more specifics. And then all the other comment areas that are pertinent to what we have in our code, if, if, and I can't think of them right now. I, the things that pop into my head are the types of things we were asking for High Speed Rail, which has to do with noise and all of that, which I don't believe we, just check to see if we need to have a noise impact on this, and, and other, other details like that. And that's my comment. So Councilmember Burt?
I seem to recall that when we last discussed this, we were presented with information on the number of cars that would be removed from off the road, primarily off El Camino as a result of the BRT. And then the number of vehicles that would be displaced by reduction in capacity of this system if a lane was taken. And... Do we have that?
Yeah, we did do it. We summarized the results of our analysis in a couple of the slides that we looked at, that, that looked at what the, if there's a dedicated lane chosen in Palo Alto, what happens to that traffic that was in that lane, and it gets diverted and then disperses to other routes. And so, the 240 intersections that we looked at, I was given an example of the screen line. This is just an example of one of those screen lines that paralleling roadways and what the impacts of those are. So we did talk about that. It's all in the evaluation that, that was looked at at all those 240 intersections, and what the impact to those off corridor intersections are.
And the simple summary, though, of how many cars would be removed from the road as a result of this, to, as a result of the increase in bus use, and how many, how much less capacity on El Camino. So that net, is that a readily available number?
Yeah, it's all, it's all in the EIR. Some of that is the ridership number. So some of those folks that were traveling in a private automobile may choose to actually get on the bus now that it's more fast, frequent, reliable. That's just what's going to happen. And there is some that are going to want to stay in their car but go a different route. And that's, those numbers are all in, in the EIR and available. We have it for every one of the intersections. And I don't, we can-
But Jaime, I think it's important, not only for the council, but for the public, to know that net number. I mean, these other analyses do matter as to where they would go. But I think that's a very important bottom line for the community, and I think we want to have it out there. I frankly expected it to be highlighted again. I don't know if you know that number off the top of your head.
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. We, we don't have the numbers right now with us, unfortunately. We got the EIR, and we, we scrambled and put in a staff report together so that the VTA could come here tonight, but we haven't extracted out the numbers. When we return with you for a comment letter, we'll have those numbers tabulated, as several of the councilmembers have already requested.
And in the staff report where it says that we're going to have a, a loss in our level, level of service, does that, do we already have that analysis of the degree of loss, or is that something that will come out of the full EIR?
We've done some preliminary analysis already. Those are some of the findings that we shared last time. We, we haven't had a chance to compare the analysis before against the new analysis that we just received. And so that's, we didn't tabulate it for you. But we'll, we'll do that when we come back with a comment letter.
And Mr. Borak raised the issue about our train system and how that impacts, or is impacted by this project, or impacts it. So are we going to be seeing an analysis of different levels of numbers of trains per hour that, and the impacts that would occur on roadway level of service degradation in conjunction with this dedicated lane?
We can do that for, for the council, Councilmember. We've done that in the past. So we already have the templates. It's just a matter of entering the new data.
Okay. And when would staff be returning to the council with this letter?
We're talking about coming back probably January 12th. The comments are due again January 14th.
They've extended the comments to the 14th of January now. They've extended, so the 12th will work.
Wouldn't give much time to change things if we wanted to from when it was submitted to the council.
It will be out 10 days ahead of time or longer because the packet release-
The letter will. Okay. And then will the alternatives look at other alternatives that I, for instance, have raised on how we could enhance bus ridership through other means? Improvements in the Eco Pass formulas and-
You know, that's not part of the discussion tonight. So we are limiting our comments just to the EIR.
Oh, it's an alternatives analysis.
All right. What's, is-
Is that correct? Wouldn't it be in alternatives?
This is for, the alternatives is the-
Scenarios were not evaluated in the EIR. But it, it certainly, if, if the city wants to put something like that in a comment letter, certainly something that we'll certainly take a look at, but-
Because for us, if we're looking at improving bus ridership, there are more ways to do this than just the bus rapid transit. And so I'd like to see that embedded in the alternatives analysis. And Jaime, you know what those three things are that I've been raising. There may be others that are raised by other members of the community. Okay, that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you very much. So nothing will come back until the 12th, the meeting of the 12th, and that packet will be released the Wednesday before, two Wednesdays before the Monday meeting. And this will be ready by that packet release.
That's correct, Mayor Shepherd.
Okay. So we'll have a long time to look at it. Thank you very much for coming. Steve and John, I think.
Madam Mayor, it actually may be the Thursday, two Thursdays before. But anyway, the idea's the same.
All right. Okay. Moving on, on our agenda, is agenda, agenda changes, additions and deletions. And I have two things I would like to report out under here. The first is related to last week's meeting and the decision that I made to revise the votes for commission appointments after I learned that the telephonic appearance of Vice Mayor Niss was posted correctly, but not defined as an emergency, as I asked the clerk to, so I asked the clerk to review the use of this attendance method and report the circumstances to me as to how we've used it in the past. This has been reported out in the press. It was confusing, I agree. So here's what I found. That in 2007, council updated the telephonic attendance policy to be actively discouraged and used only under extraordinary events, such as medical, family, or similar emergency, requiring a member's absence. I also learned that it was used 10 times by five councilmembers since this change. Four by Councilmember Yay from his office in Oakland in 2011, one time by Councilmember Burt from Truckee in 2011, one time by Councilmember Holman from Missouri in 2013, one time by Councilmember Klein in Washington DC in 2013, and three times by Vice Mayor Niss from Massachusetts, Truckee and Hawaii in 2014. In 2013 and 2014, it is not clear if any of these remote attendances were based on identified emergencies. It is something that all of councilmembers are responsible for deciding. But I do suggest that the council consider a review of this policy prior to the approval of the city council procedures and protocols handbook next year, which is routine in January. The next item that I wanted to report out is item number 12 tonight. This is the approval of the grocer at the College Terrace Center, the tenant. It's on our agenda, and we have new information that has been not available to the public in the official materials delivered to council last week. Since this is not a planning application, but rather additional material to a planned community ordinance, it does not violate Procedure 3.4, submission of materials directly to council. However, since we have a long meeting tonight, I would like to consider postponing this item to December 1st, so that the letter dated November 12th from Palo Alto Land Use Consulting to the city council members upgrading the surety of the grocery store occupancy and the compliance of $1,000 per day penalty for a zoning violation have additional public noticing time. By moving this item to December 1st, the outcome from the second neighborhood meeting on November 19th could be considered in the approval of the grocery tenant for College Terrace Market. So for this reason, I would like to move the item, be, move to December 1st and ask council support for a second to this motion. And I think I've discussed this already. Councilmember, I mean, Vice Mayor Niss, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I think you've explained it well.
Is there any comments, or do you just want to go and vote on this? Councilmember Schmidt?
What about the number of people who will come to speak tonight?
I was going to continue to announce that it's been postponed to the 1st, but also let people speak when the item is supposed to appeared on the agenda, so that those that would like to speak to it could. I would like to hear tonight if we want to let them speak again on the 1st.
Yeah.
So if you'd mind if they speak twice, I guess would be my question. Or tonight, or, or never. Once, once, we can keep track of them. Let's, let's just see how it works out for the evening. So in that case, I see no more lights. Let's go ahead and vote. That passes unanimously with Councilmember Holman absent. All right then. That does give us a little more time with the agenda. And I wanted to know if councilmembers wanted to find a time to do a dinner break, since that was not part of our venue for the evening. If, if, in that case, maybe we could take up, I know we already have a public here for some items, so I don't want to keep them waiting for that. So should we just go through and see if there's a natural break at some point? Anybody have any comments? We'll just- Councilmember Klein? Right now? All right. Do you want to-
I would concur.
All right. 15 minutes for dinner? Do we need to vote on that? No. So do we have anybody that objects to a 15-minute dinner break right now? In, in that case, why don't we come back here promptly at 6:30? In that case, why don't we come back here promptly at 6:30 so that we don't keep our public waiting? 6:35? Well, if I say 6:30, then it will be 6:35 when we get here. Okay, so thank you very much for being patient, public, and we will return here at 6:35. The city manager's comments, except the city manager has not returned from dinner. There he is, here comes the city manager. And thank you again, public, for being patient.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. See a number of items to report. This Saturday, this Saturday, no, take that back, Saturday, November 29th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at Litton Plaza, Palo Alto's Fourth Annual Holiday Tree Lighting Event will kick off the holiday season with the mayor officially lighting the tree at 6:00 PM, the 29th. The event will also feature holiday music with carolers, school groups and bands, as well as ornament making and fun activities for kids. In addition to the city and the Palo Alto Arts Center, other sponsors include Stanford, Federal Credit Union, Whole Foods, the Palo Alto Weekly, Palo Alto Downtown Business Association and Cafe Venetia. As you would expect, due to the drought, there will be no snow this year. On Saturday, November 15th, last Saturday, members of the Residential Permit Parking Stakeholder Committee, RPP Committee, hosted a community meeting at Avenidas to discuss the RPP proposal, which will be before council on December 1st. Jessica Sullivan on our staff presented an overview of the many parking and transportation-related initiatives moving forward under the council's leadership and had an in-depth discussion on the particulars of the proposed resolution establishing neighborhood parking restrictions around downtown. The meeting was well-attended with about 25 people and many perspectives were shared. Another meeting with a similar format will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on this Wednesday, November 19th at Channing House. Also on Wednesday, November 19th, Santa Clara County is hosting a community outreach meeting for their Expressway Study 2040 program at Terman Middle School at 6:30 PM. Santa Clara County staff will present alternatives for improvements along Foothill Expressway and Page Mill Road, and the county will conduct, the county conducted, excuse me, a similar meeting during the day today up at SAP in an effort to engage employees in the research park. The fire department, our fire department in conjunction with the Santa Clara County Department of Public Health, the County Emergency Medical Services Agency, Stanford Hospital and local, state and federal agencies have been reviewing, training and updating guidelines to meet the Ebola virus risk. The fire department's Emergency Management Services Division has participated in series of meetings to prepare crews and equipment. Guidelines, I think as you know from just reading the national media, have been changing rapidly with many organizations and groups weighing in on the best practices. Our fire department maintains the supplies of the protective equipment, including gowns, respirators, gloves and goggles, and our department is confident that it meets the best practices with infection control and universal precautions, policies and procedures. As practices evolve, our department will continuously modify its approach to best protect our community. City of Palo Alto staff have been busy conducting community outreach meetings related to the bicycle plan implementation projects or potential projects that are currently in the planning and design phases. On Tuesday, November 18th, staff will convene the next meeting at the Green Meadow Community Room, starting at 6:30 PM. This meeting will focus on South Palo Alto projects for which Google has offered funding, including the Louis Montrose Bicycle Boulevards, the San Antonio Bicycle Route, the Alma Street Enhanced Bikeway, the Middlefield Road Enhanced Bikeway and the Coverly Center Bicycle Route. There is a detailed website regarding all of the bicycle implementation projects that are underway at the City Palo Alto website, paloalto.bike.fairandpeers.net actually. And I've asked the staff in the beginning of the new year to be prepared to do a little study session with the council to go over the range of almost 20-some projects that are under consideration. Last Thursday, November 13th, local officials and industry leaders commemorated the completion of a new landfill gas-to-energy project at the Foothills Land Hill in San Joaquin County. This is the fifth and last city project. We've contracted with Amoresco Incorporated to purchase clean renewable energy generated through landfill gas capture. The project will generate 4.3 megawatts of electricity, which is enough to serve power about 3,000 homes each year. Mayor Shepherd helped cut the ribbon in a celebration of another successful milestone in the city's work towards further reducing its carbon footprint. And then an interesting pilot project along El Camino Real between Embarcadero Road and Sarah Street. We're installing new solar photovoltaic modules along this section as part of a pilot project to test the potential to generate renewable energy using solar technology on light poles. The solar modules will help power the streetlights, send extra electricity back to the grid and allow the city to remotely control lighting and improve maintenance. The technologies hope to increase renewable energy production at no cost to the city and could help transform streetlights into a network of smart distributed solar generating assets. Community members are invited to provide feedback through an online survey at our cityofpaloalto.org website at the El Camino Solar Test page. And then lastly, I'll have something specifically sent out on this, but working with the clerk's office. We're coming to the end of the year and the beginning of the new year, and the council has a established process for generating priorities from councilmembers for the new year in advance of the council retreat yet to be scheduled. And that process involves inviting councilmembers to share their priorities for the next year. There are some essentially limited to identifying three priorities each. Obviously, we'll be extending this invitation to the councilmembers elect for their input, and the council always asks that we reach out to the public for input on those priorities. We'll be doing that, and I believe at the Policy and Services Committee meeting on the 16th, this will go to the Policy and Services Committee meeting as, and following your directive would be, the committee would be recommending organizing the results in some way so that they're a little bit more ready for the council when the retreat is set in January or February of next year. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, I'm glad those got out according to procedure.
Actually, I had one more item if I might, just looking at the calendar, Madam Mayor. We had scheduled the follow-up meeting for the comprehensive plan discussion that was actually carried forward from tonight's meeting at the request of council to December 15th, but that is your last meeting. And we've made some adjustments in the schedule and are actually, we'll renotice it for the December 8th meeting so that it's not the last meeting of the year. And we'll be moving the 441 Page Mill hearing off until the January meeting. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. And we did, and we're not taking out the comp plan tonight, which was originally noticed that tonight would be that night, and we have made an accommodation because Councilmember Holman is out, so...
That's correct.
Now we are at oral communications, and this is where members of the public may speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Council receives the right to limit the duration of oral communications period to 30 minutes. I have nine people wanting to speak, so that will take about 30 minutes, and so we'll keep it at three minutes each. Our first speaker will be Pete Curzo, to be followed by Lynn Krug, to be followed by Winter Dellenbach.
Good evening, city councilmembers. My name is Peter Curros. I'm a gas system technician in the utilities department here in Palo Alto. I want to start off by saying, September 9th, 2010, approximately 6:00 PM. On that day, there was a gas explosion in San Bruno, causing chaos, disaster, death. Now that was four years ago, and a lot of us in California have forgotten, many in the nation completely forgot, but those in that community still remember. They're still hurt, they're still pain, there's still legal problems for that utility company that is responsible for that explosion. With that said, I'm here to let you know that the City of Palo Alto employees who provide live gas to homes of thousands of our local residents, we are very disappointed and concerned with the recent decision made by the management and utilities engineering. Our city staff has provided live gas service to the homes for decades with a very high level of safety, service and quality. City workers like myself take great pride in providing this service and maintaining our gas infrastructure for our community. But management and the utilities engineering department has made a decision to put live gas work in the hands of inexperienced, unskilled outside contractors who have never worked on live gas before. We have very serious concerns regarding this decision. It takes years of work in the field prior to becoming capable of doing this work. I have been working on live gas for 10 years here at Palo Alto along with PG&E. I have, I could tell you that it takes countless hours of doing live gas work with direct supervision of skilled workers before you could handle this commodity safely. Working on natural gas cannot be taken lightly. It is a very scary thought knowing that a contractor that has never worked on live gas before is working in our neighborhoods. We do not want to see another disaster like San Bruno happen in Palo Alto. The safety of Palo Alto residents is at risk. When there is an issue with live gas, utility workers aren't going to be around. People making decisions behind desks aren't going to be around. It's going to be the residents, and it's going to be catastrophe, explosion, death, homes being torn down. I believe that's a serious issue, and I don't live here in Palo Alto. I wish I could, but I take my work seriously and I try to provide the best service I can, and I don't believe that's happening with a contractor.
Thank you, Lynn Krug, to be followed by Winter Dellenbach, to be followed by Terry Holsmer.
My name is Lynn Krug, and thank you, city councilmembers, for listening. I strongly support what Pete has just said. I believe safety is paramount. Live gas, I've been in the City of Palo Alto working around, excuse me, I don't work with live gas, and I take it very seriously for the people who do for that very reason. So I hope you will take this under consideration and follow up. Thank you.
Thank you, Winter Dellenbach, to be followed by Terry Holsmer, to be followed by Brian Anna Ushkowicz.
I'm Winter Dellenbach. I live in the Barron Park neighborhood, and I was asked, since they knew I was going to be here tonight anyway, if I would announce on behalf of Buena Vista Mobile Home Park residents, the annual Posada that they invite everyone in Palo Alto, everybody in Stanford staff, to adults, children. Let me read you quickly the invitation, everybody that's watching on TV or whatever, you are invited. For you and your children, Buena Vista's Third Annual Holiday Posada Celebration. As sweet as pan dulce, the sugary buns, and Posada is a 400-year-old Mexican folk celebration held each December. Its origins are found in Aztec winter solstice observance, the food, the pinata, and Spanish Christian traditions, the candlelight procession. Palo Altons of all ages, religions and cultures will feel welcome. Saturday, December 6th, Saturday, December 6th, 5:00 to 9:00. You want to get there around 5:00. The donkeys, the famous Barron Park donkeys, Pericles and Niner, will be there from 4:30 to 5:30 only. So you get there on the early side. Candlelight procession at 5:30. Angel, children lead Mary and Joseph in search of a place to stay. Is this perfect for Buena Vista? Shelter is found in a stable and celebration ensues. Reyes de Mexico Folklorica, girls will dance again in their fantastic regional costumes there over at Coverly. A traditional star-shaped pinata will be there to delight the children, and Posada food, free for all, that the residents make. Hundreds of the best tamales, poncha, the warm punch, pozole, the warm soup, which is nice on a wintery night. And of course, it's at Buena Vista Mobile Home Park at Las Robles and El Camino. You do have to RSVP, so you go to F O B V dot org, friendsofbuenvista.org, F O B V dot org. And you can also get lots of information about Buena Vista and the situation that the residents find themselves in. So please, everybody come to Posada. I think it may be Palo Alto's biggest holiday celebration, not sure, but I think it might. And I will leave a few invitations with the clerk, and there are invitations on the table as you come into council chambers. So let's all have a happy Posada.
Thank you, Terry Holsmer, to be followed by Brian Anna Schurich, to be followed by Saibel Bouchon.
Good evening, councilmembers. I thought it was very important for me to come here tonight to voice my displeasure and unhappiness and frustration over last Monday's council decisions regarding the new appointees for the planning commission, the ARB and the HRB. The commission and candidates that were chosen have already, it's already clear that they have a pro-development approach to things. It's a shame that candidates that could have been chosen, that have a desire for focus on Palo Alto residents, were not chosen. It's a shame that the current council majority has failed to see the results of the last election as a clear message that Palo Altons want a new direction, and they want to see less development, not more. The loss of Arthur Keller and Carl King on the PTC, who have already represented residents in a great way, is very upsetting to somebody like myself because we need more diverse opinions on these important commissions and not less. What is needed on the commissions and boards is more true representatives of Palo Alto residents. I don't think Palo Altons will forget this, and I hope that the new council will take steps to correct these errors. We definitely need a more balanced approach. We need to be listening to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian Anna Schurich, to be followed by Saibel Bouchon and Suzanne Kehoe.
Good evening, councilmembers. Brian Anna Skivitch. Last week, this council made the appointments for the three city commissions. Two weeks previous, the voters of Palo Alto have made their choices in electing councilmembers. The Architectural Review Board is getting two new commissioners. This is a good time to redefine the ARB review process. The board needs to remove its subjective findings and suggestive guidelines from its review of a project and replace this with a more solid base of rules, regulations and building standards that both the applicant, the city review process and the public will better understand. Four words can go a long way in defining the voice in review by the ARB members. Compliance, compatibility, context, creativity. This more defined review process can allow city staff to present project applications to the board with a standard review that applies to all applicants that bring their proposals before the city review process. Fairness and clarity. The design enhancement exception is currently being implemented in a way that it keeps a project in the city review pipeline. This can be too sub... This can be too subjective and does not often produce a better building or better review process. This must change. Applicants see no reason in reducing the size and scope of their projects when this exception is the available alternative to being in compliance. Council must make this change a priority. We hope that city council commissioners and city staff understands that it's also the residents that want to invest their time and their voice in shaping the city's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Cybel Bouchon, to be followed by Suzanne Kehoe, to be followed by Robert Moss.
Cybel Lobolo Bouchon, and I want to talk about Buena Vista tonight. I see Buena Vista as the one real place where we have diversity. We have affordable housing without having to build it, and it's impossible that the council even considers rezoning that land. It should not be rezoned, and I would ask you to make a motion tonight to pledge not to rezone that land until there's a real settlement that can work. And I know Mozart gave $8 million when they settled out of court. There's $12 million right now in affordable housing. It's time to move forward, it's time to protect the residents of Buena Vista, where we have diversity in this city, and without it, I don't know what diversity we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne Kehoe, to be followed by Robert Moss, to be followed by C. Ready.
Suzanne Keen. It just seems that pretty unconscionable that the, that the city council has not listened to the will of the voters, which basically is saying they don't want as much development as we have seen, or the type of development. It also is that the commissioners that were okayed need to be much more eclectic, many different types of voices, especially the residential, and that I'm hoping that the new council will be able to rescind this and put in a much more balanced set of commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert Moss, to be followed by C. Ready, to be followed by Aram James.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and the council members. I'm also disappointed at your appointments to the ARB and the Planning Commission last week. As you know, the community has made it very clear that they're pretty much fed up with excessive development, big and ugly buildings, and ignoring community desire for compatible projects to go in. We demonstrated that in the Maybell vote, and we demonstrated that again with the election this month. So it's disappointing, the people that were selected for the ARB and the Planning Commission, I'm not going to get into the ARB people in any detail, it's just that they are much more interested in large, ungainly projects than the people who were selected than people who were not. But in the Planning Commission, what I thought was a real blunder was not reappointing Arthur Keller, who has demonstrated years of dedication, experience, and knowledge about development and projects in this city, and what works and what doesn't. He was by far the best-informed commissioner on the Planning Commission for years, and I thought it was a real mistake not to reappoint him. And the people who were appointed in place of him have not demonstrated that level of concern and knowledge. I was really amused by the one new commissioner who in the past has said that we have plenty of room for high-density housing developments, we'll just put them on all of the vacant school sites. And I got to thinking, if we limited future high-development, high-density housing developments to the vacant school sites, we wouldn't have any more problems, because there'd be no more developments, because there ain't any vacant school sites, and there haven't been for 20 years. So if people who are as misinformed as this are how you select commissioners, we have a real problem.
C. Ready, to be followed by Aram James.
Good evening, the city council, as well as the citizens of Palo Alto. So the good news is that we have an agreement on Cubberly, so I request that we...
I'm sorry, we do have that as an agenda item, so this is a time when you can speak to anything that's not on our agenda.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. So, anyway, I want to leave it at a positive note. The second thing that I want to talk about is, let's get more power to the city council. I would like, I would request, I would beg Lydia not to concede. You know, what I've seen at the Santa Clara County election is a little bit, I have a little bit to swallow, that they're not up to the game. The IT manager quit two days before, so I want somebody to help recount the election so we know exactly what the Palo Alto citizens want. I voted for Lydia, I want to go on the record, and I would like to see if the City of Palo Alto citizens also wanted... Either way is fine, I want to make sure that it's a proper count, you know, 100-vote difference is not a big deal. We don't want an Al Gore thing here, we don't want a Judge Scalia thing here, so we want to really know the truth, so we can have the strength, whether it is a residentialist or not residentialist, and if the city is divided and we want to negotiate in the backroom, we will know. So please, Lydia, don't concede. You know, I like Corey, you know, if that's what the citizens want, Corey can come back here and use his power to negotiate with the city, but I don't want anybody to concede and say, well, you know, I have a little doubt that the count is correct, you know, that's what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you, and Aram James.
Just a couple of random things I want to comment about tonight. Residentialists, I wonder what that really means? I'm going to be very interested to see if people like Eric Philseth and the other residentialists include residents of Palo Alto who are unhoused under that penumbra, or whether they're going to create a continued hostility towards the unhoused members of this community. I certainly hope that's not the case, but I, if they do, if Mr. Philseth decides that he's going to try to circumvent the Constitution and the way that he applies policy to the unhoused members of the community, I'll be here to speak out against that. So that's one thought. As far as the lame duck appointment of commissioners, who may more closely resemble the politics of those people that were voted out of office, that's sort of a routine in the politics of this country and in city councils. So what I would say, if people like Bob Moss are so upset about that, make sure you're at all of the meetings, all the commission meetings where you can express your voice and your disagreements. And I think Mr. Kellerman, I'm told from the little that I've read in the press about him, he'll probably be running for city council. So that's interesting. And Larry Klein's not here, so this is something I kind of wanted to address to him, but I'll do it anyway. I thought it was very interesting, there was just a very short piece that Larry wrote in the Weekly about the fact that there is no embarrassment about losing a particular issue that you might have pursued on the council. I think maybe in Larry's case, he was talking about, there's no embarrassment about the fact that the candidate, some of the candidates that he was pushing didn't win. And I'm absolutely in agreement with Larry. Very rarely have I ever agreed with Mr. Klein on anything, but I think Louis Brandeis said, the most important function of citizens is to have robust discussions on the issues. I'm sorry that Larry waited until almost the 11th hour of his eight years to take that position, because I've often thought, when I was on the wrong side of issues, that I couldn't get Larry's ear. But that's okay, you've raised a good point, and I hope that you'll continue to come here as a citizen Klein, and we can have robust discussions on those issues down the road. That's all I have to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have minute approvals for September 8th, 2014.
Mayor Shepherd, I have a card on number nine.
I don't have one for Herb, I don't have, I have one on number nine, which is Consent Calendar, which I'm not on Consent Calendar yet.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, right now, we're on Minute Approval. That was Oral Communications. I need a motion to accept the minutes for September 8th.
It's moved.
All right, we've got that moved and seconded, let's vote. That motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Holman absent. Now I have Consent Calendar, and yes, I have your card. And do I have any more cards for Consent Calendar? All right, I have two cards. First is for item number eight. Our speaker will be Cybel Bouchon, to be followed by Herb Borak on item number nine.
So, item eight is a grant from Homeland Security, as I understand, because I only saw that today, and there were no copies to take with, but I did look at the whole proposal and the grant. So under the rubric of terrorism, we are entering into an agreement with National Security Agency to agree to be part of a fusion center. And although I do understand the necessity for emergency preparedness, I do understand that if we had a terrorist attack, I'm from Massachusetts, where the marathon happened, and that was really tragic, I do understand the need to be prepared for emergency. We could have flooding, whatever. But I am kind of taken a little back, that I don't know more about it, I don't know what this fusion center is going to be, I don't know why the agreement is there and going to be voted on this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, and item number nine, Herb Borak.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd. I request that you remove this item from the Consent Calendar for the purpose of modifying the continuation date. The comprehensive plan update has been going on for many years, during which time there have been many developments, when normally a new comprehensive plan or an amended comprehensive plan would have taken place prior to them. And now, after the election, we have an agenda item to discuss the scope, schedule, planning process, including concurrent zoning changes, just as the three members are leaving the council. Now, whatever decisions the council might make on this on December 15th is not binding on the new council with three new members. And considering how much time has already been spent waiting to get a comprehensive plan, delaying this from December 15th to January is not a material change in the amount of time, and in terms of the public process, I think it makes more sense for this thing, for this subject matter to be discussed in January rather than at the last meeting of three council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, City Manager Jim Keen.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Mr. Borak beat me the punch just a little bit on just clarifying that item number nine ought to change the date from December 15th to December 8th, and the city attorney would concur that you're able to do that without having to pull the item, making noting that change.
Item number nine isn't a legal requirement to have a motion to change that date or a vote, it's really just there for public notice, and the city managers have provided new and updated public notice that the discussion will occur on the earlier meeting, so.
Thank you very much. In that case, I'd like to have a motion for the Consent Calendar with the change in date for item number nine from December 15th, 2014, to December 8th, 2014.
Second.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote. And the Consent Calendar carries with Councilmember Holman absent. So now we are at our action items. And item number 10, the approval of the Third Amendment of the Cubberly lease with Palo Alto Unified School District. Last Wednesday, as the council packet was being released to the public, the city sent a joint press release with the school district announcing the tentative agreement reached on the Cubberly lease. Tonight, we have been asked to authorize the amendment extending the lease for an additional five years, using the terms contained in Attachment A of the staff report. After the staff report and public comment, I will return to council for a motion that the council authorized the mayor to sign the agreement. With that, I'll turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. When we were celebrating the emergent opening of the Mitchell Park Library, we had a nice little British Invasion event, built around the Beatles song "Come Together." So I just, I'm happy to report that in that same spirit, we've reached the end of the long and winding road on Cubberly, at least for the next five years, I think, if the council approves this, which is, of course, I would urge you to do so. I would say that soon after the arrival of Max McGee as a school superintendent, I was able to participate in a series of very fruitful meetings about finding common ground that we share, actually, literally, at Cubberly, and bring forward a lease that was responsive to the directives that the council had given to us in public back in February. And of course, that's been built on, you know, a lot of public discussions, a multi-year process with the Community Advisory Committee on Cubberly and their recommendations. This lease does not include absolutely everything that the council asks us to look at, but it does eliminate the covenant not to develop clause, which has long outlived its usefulness. It converts that annual payment into a property infrastructure fund for Cubberly itself to be used on a needed maintenance and capital projects. It lasts for a term of five years with the requirement that the city and the school district engage in the creation of a master plan for the site, to guide the long-term planning and direction for Cubberly. It does include a 3% annual adjustment on the lease, the remaining lease portions of the agreement, and it shares some of the risk in the potential loss of our key anchor tenant, Foothill College, which is projected to leave the site and move sometime during the five-year term that we are here. There were some issues related to Ventura and playing fields, and a couple of other items that are not included, but I think, all in all, this is a really, really positive step for both the school district and the city, and I would urge the council's approval of the amendment, and staff is here to answer questions as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, and I forgot to announce once again that item number 12 will be deferred till December 1st, which is the J.JNF market. Thank you. And we have some speakers on this, so I'm going to go out to the public first, and then we can take comments from colleagues. Our first speaker on the Cubberly item will be Joe Hirsch, to be followed by Gary Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can honestly tell you on behalf of myself and the Cardiac Therapy Foundation that we're absolutely thrilled to see that although it'd be 11 months late, the city and the school district have finally agreed upon a long-term lease, five years is a long enough term for us for this site. This is exciting news, and I hope you endorse it wholeheartedly. I'm sure there was a lot of compromise, give and take, but the fact that my organization, which has been in continual existence for 43 years, and has been at Cubberly since January 2003, can continue to exist is very exciting news. I think I've told you before, and I will repeat, if we did not have the space at Cubberly, the Cardiac Therapy Foundation would be out of business. We serve approximately 200 people, all of whom have cardiovascular disease, and while I'm always intrigued to see the staff reports, and I'm pleased to see items about childcare, every now and then I would love to see something about seniors. There are a lot of seniors there. The average age in my group is 76 years old, we have people well into their 90s, and this program helps keep us all alive. So we look forward to having our lease, which expires at the end of the year, extended at Cubberly, and thus, wholeheartedly support the staff... Cubberly and thus wholeheartedly support the staff recommendation and the extension of the lease at Cubberly. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Smith to be followed by Stephanie Munoz to be followed by C. Reddy.
Your Honorable Mayor and City Council, I wanted to commend you for your leadership in keeping Cubberly and for the community. I actually live in West San Jose near Saratoga, and for the last six or seven years, I've participated pretty regularly in the ballroom dancing there. Phil Mast, who you probably know, I think he lives here in Palo Alto, manages the Saturday and the Friday events, Friday for the last year or so. And he has actually, I understand, done that for about, well, since the early 80s. And there's some distinguished teachers who have evolved out of there, James Kleinrich, Melody Singleton, not to name others. James actually has won 13 senior-level ballroom championships in the United States, and he acknowledges that he actually met there. And it's a venue that's open. It's not hidden. It's not exclusive. It's not expensive, and it's really a great thing that Palo Alto is offering the community. So I just wanted to thank you and share my appreciation.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz to be followed by C. Reddy.
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd. It's always been a delight for me to say Mayor Shepherd because you've been a real asset as a mayor to this community and representing us. You're everything that we could want an American educated woman to be. That said, on to Cubberly. You know, I've been asking you for some time now to consider having teacher housing, rental housing at Cubberly. You could make money on it. The school would, the school district would save a bundle. The teachers would in fact be housed, which is very, very, very necessary. And as you go forward into your well-deserved lease that you finally made, please realize that most of these facilities, including the cardiac and definitely the childcare, could be on the ground floor of an apartment building, a lovely apartment building for teacher residences. And I want you to think about that as you're going through it, not because as the months and the years go by, you work yourself into or out of the position of profiting to the maximum from that land. And I just want you to think about it. We've got to have teachers. There is no place for them to live in Palo Alto. And it doesn't matter that the teachers who are now in teaching have homes. So what? So they can buy their way into a lovely retirement by selling their homes, but they won't sell them to another teacher. The new teachers coming online don't have any place to live. My daughter's a teacher. And teachers in Palo Alto unified from time to time. Taught Chinese the other day. Don't ask me how. Anyway, please do think about it. Please, please, please. We have to have a place for the teachers to live. You own the property. It would be well-spent and teacher housing. Thank you. And you could use all these good things that you have there right now, or not all of them, but most of them. Thanks.
Thank you. And our final speaker on this is C. Reddy.
Good evening, council, as well as Jim and Max. You've done a great thing to close this up, and let's get moving. I think the first thing ought to be pave the roads so all the potholes and all that don't look as bad. And then maybe think about for a little bit, it takes a lot to plan, you know, in Palo Alto, it takes a lot more to plan, but you take the existing footprint and fix the walls, fix the roof while you're planning the master plan of whatever that comes out. And one day, we might need a high school there, so we could take it, the modular approach. Use as-is, don't increase the rent, let all the children, you know, learn all those things that they're learning, let all the seniors come in there, let all the, you know, schoolwork, Foothill School, college is, so please do not again make it unaffordable because that's about the only place we have in Palo Alto that's really working well. It's a great location, great community, great to see children, great to see, you know, the bookstore, the one where people can go and buy books, a fantastic thing. So please do good work and let's get something by the end of next Christmas to look more like a nice place of the 70s that we painted and looks nicer. You know, I use the bathrooms that are not very good, and I think we first of all to get to the bathrooms and clean them, so where we can actually flush the toilets and not have to leave it out, you know. Thank you all. Bye.
Thank you. With that, we can bring this back to colleagues for any comments, or I guess we need a motion. Councilmember Schmidt, would you like to make the motion?
I think schools are the most important element for the city's long-term health, and I'm delighted to see city and school district cooperating in moving forward toward that future. I like the idea that the school district has five years to look at their options and what they might need. I like that there are dollars now dedicated to capital spending on the site, which can maintain at least the existing plant and begin to plan for new things there. It means that over the next five years, we'll continue to have programs, childcare, child education, athletic fields, classrooms, gyms, auditoriums, and senior services. And it leaves the Ventura site open as an option. So I'm delighted to see this symbol of let's work together cooperatively over the next five years. And I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the third amendment to the lease between Palo Alto and the Palma.
Okay, that's been moved by Councilmember Schmidt, seconded by Councilmember Klein. Would you like to speak any further to your motion?
No, I'm fine.
Well, I'm delighted that we've finally gotten to the stage. There were times over the last several years of these negotiations where I would be becoming discouraged that we would ever reach an agreement, but I think that thanks to the negotiating skills of our city manager and the much greater spirit of cooperation from the new school superintendent, we've gotten there. And I think we've accomplished several things for the city's standpoint and from the community's standpoint. One is the elimination of the obsolete covenant not to development and the money that went along with it. Two, we've now established a fund from those monies to provide for needed repairs and improvements to the site, which of course is showing its age. Third, I think that the school board has to be commended in understanding that Foothill has been such a major tenant that they need to share in the downturn and revenues there that might occur when Foothill moves to its new campus in Sunnyvale. But beyond all those things, I think the key thing is the assurance to the community that all of those activities, which we've heard a few here tonight, will continue at Cubberly at least for the next five years. And where we go beyond that will be subject to input from council members, school board members, but most of all, from our community. So I'm delighted to support this. I do have one quibble, and it's really directed to staff, and it's because of an error that's creeped into our language. And I refer to page two, so I hope we get page two of the staff report, packet page 241, where it stated, "Together, this 35-acre site is the last major plot of publicly-owned land in the city proper." That is simply not true. We have many parcels of land that are in excess of 35 acres. If it meant the 35 acres is the last major plot of land, publicly-owned land, for which the final use hasn't been determined, even that is questionable because you can always make changes in one way or another. And lastly, it says publicly-owned land in the city proper. Proper? I have no idea what city proper means. Does it mean that, well, anyway, you can think about it yourselves. The city is the city as far as I'm concerned, not the city proper. So I would hope that staff would take that in mind and cut out that language and anything further that we have to vote on with regard to Cubberly in the future. But quibble aside, I think this is a very good night for the community.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, I'll briefly follow along with the praise of Councilmembers Schmidt and Klein. I think this is a really good resolution of this phase of the community discussion and was something that needed to happen. We needed some clarity on this before we can really move forward with a master plan. I want to thank the Cubberly Community Advisory Committee, who I don't know if members of that committee are in the audience right now, but they did a lot of great work that they delivered soon after I came on council two years ago that has been helpful as a roadmap and will be helpful as a roadmap moving forward. There's still a lot of work to be done, I think. I want to thank staff and the school board for, you know, the compromises that have been made to date. And now I think is some of the more exciting work, which is talking about the future of Cubberly and the vision of the asset that it can be, both for the southern part of Palo Alto, but for all of Palo Alto, and as we heard from a gentleman today, to people from outside of Palo Alto. It's a huge, there is so much potential at Cubberly that's not being tapped because we haven't been able to invest in it properly for the future. And so the fact that we're redirecting the $1.86 million from the covenant not to develop to start that work and hopefully over the next couple of years, develop a long-term plan with the school board and with members of the community, I'm excited for it. It, you know, Cubberly looks not very different from when I was playing basketball there 30 years ago. So there's a lot of opportunity. One question I had for staff was on packet page 244, we say, under the loss of anchor tenant section, talking about the last sentence of that where it says, "Alternatively, should the city choose to use some or all the space for its own purposes, such as temporary relocation of the junior museum and zoo, it would pay the appropriate rent to the district," and that just jumped out to me.
Yeah, that's really not exactly, it doesn't match up exactly with the way we structured the language in the lease. It's probably a shortcut way that some of our financial folks tried to get to the net effect, but that's not the vehicle for how it would be done. We'd be sharing in the loss proportionate.
Yeah, assuming that the rent from J.M.Z. wouldn't be higher than Foothill, which I couldn't imagine it would be. So I think this is great. I'm excited to put this behind us and move forward. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Ness.
Thanks, and thanks for the comments colleagues have made. This is an extraordinary resource. There is absolutely no question, but it also is extraordinarily in need of a facelift. How many of you have been in Cubberly lately, in any part of it? Maybe a third of you. There are a number of classrooms that are really sadly in need of repair. There is pavement in need of repair. As we take this over and we're paying almost five and a half million to the school district every year, we need to really think seriously over the next five years about what is going to happen to this facility long-term. As Foothill leaves, which is a terrific facility, probably the only one that is in the shape that it's in on that whole campus, it is going to make a big difference in the amount of revenue that comes into the city. It's something we have to think about very seriously. I think the five years is obviously going to be adequate because that's what we're signing tonight, but there are a couple of other areas that I think are really important that we've stressed over the years, and one of them is the playing fields. The playing fields are extraordinarily well-used. It's an area I think that we need to continue to look at, we need to make sure it stays within the rec department, within our, not only kids, but adults who want to play on those fields. Again, I would suggest to go down if you haven't been lately and take a look at that. I think we've mentioned some of the other things, but I am very concerned about the loss of that so-called anchor tenant. And perhaps those of you in here may think of another business or something similar that might like to go in there. Go take a look at it. It's obviously very computer-friendly, and I think it might be a building that, you know, someone else in the community might really take advantage of. So congratulations to all of us now that it's signed with a little more than a month to go where it would expire at the end of December. And I want to say thanks again to Councilmember Klein, who was in on this at the beginning, is now in on this at at least one of the endings. And I know that he and others have spent extraordinary amounts of time on this, including Joe Hirsch out there, and others who really have committed themselves to the master plan and to the future of Cubberly. Thanks.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. I actually would also like to do a shout-out to Superintendent Max McGee, who clearly was a good partner with us in this and moved this forward. I think it's really a great agreement. The fact that we have a restricted property infrastructure fund, which is going to get almost $2 million a year to upgrade Cubberly, I think that's a huge accomplishment. And in fact, this whole agreement provides a framework which will hopefully allow us to end up with a master plan that the community likes for the site, for the school district's interest. And I think the lease term that says that within five years, the school district will have master planned the site with the city, I think that's a huge accomplishment to get that done and to have the funding in place to implement that master plan. And so that is sort of a really wonderful thing for this community. I also think that we need to keep our eye on the ball in this as we go through the master planning exercise, how important it is to have a community center there, and how many people rely on Cubberly as a community center and access to the playing fields. And I think as a city, we need to think of those as guiding principles of how we're going to move forward when we master plan the site. Thank you.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you. I concur with all the comments made. I'm particularly interested in the joint planning because of my own professional background in community and strategic planning. And I did talk to Dr. Max McGee last week on a variety of issues, including Project Safety Net, and just talking to him as an ex-school board member, and he did comment how productive and worthwhile the conversations had been with Jim Keen. And I think that's a tremendously important and exciting observation. I think the joint planning gives us an opportunity to be very, very creative and engaging the community, to have an outcome that, for which we can all be very, very proud. And I think it does demonstrate that we can and do work collaboratively with our partners. And I think that it will be a tremendous asset, continue to be an asset, and it will be something that will serve many generations to come. I appreciate all the hard work and the detail and technical knowledge required to bring this to fruition. It's an excellent document. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I want to just chime in with these accomplishments of getting this lease negotiated. I agree, it is pretty much 12 months past what we thought we would be doing. We thought we would get this wrapped up by the end of last year so that we could actually start to launch into some of the items that came out of the Cubberly work, community meetings that we had, the stakeholder meetings that we had. And I'm very grateful that we were able to have the time to do that. This was a long process. It does remind me of people who like to talk about closed schools and how awful it was that the school district sold schools back in the day. And one of the things that has been illuminated to me in this agreement is the fact that this was happening up and down the state of California, so much so that the Naylor Act was put in place because people, the state of California, people, the community started to realize that they were losing the fields that went along with the schools that were quasi-parks and/or pickup games for softball or practice. So this is something that did happen up and down the state. Palo Alto has a number of schools that are either Palo Alto has a number of schools that are either rented out, Pinewood School up in the Los Altos Hills, Garland School down in Old Palo Alto, this school here, a Ventura site. Some school districts do not have that cushion at all. They have lost their schools completely, and they're trying to do public-private partnerships with the city and businesses in order to tuck in schools as the population grows. So I think we're very fortunate for, and very rich for having this accessible site. And I'm extremely supportive of taking these funds and putting it into capital improvements, because it's a very, very, very tired and rundown site, where I cannot follow the parking lot in the back, how people are actually supposed to park. When I go over there for my granddaughter's bobby socks games, people try to do the best job they can in getting their cars in, and it's just, it's still, it needs that, the type of attention that I think the school district and the city are gearing up to do. So, very grateful that we went through this process, and hope that this gets launched quickly, and we have a good plan in five years. So with that, why don't we go ahead and vote? Would you like to make any further statements, Jim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I did want to thank you for your direction and leadership on this, and I did want to just acknowledge, in addition to Max McGee and his staff, that Kara Silver and the City Attorney's Office, along with the City Attorney Molly Stump, Chief Financial Officer Lalo Perez, and Real Estate Director Hamid Kamagami, were important staff people who share in credit for what we accomplished here. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote. And it looks like we have an agreement with Coverley. So with, this is, it passes unanimously with Councilmember Holman, absent. So we are now moving to item number 11. And this is the adoption of an ordinance repealing the prohibition of human habitation of vehicles in the municipal code. Over the years, the city receives complaints from residents about people living in vehicles around town or parked in front of their house. In 2011, staff requested council action on an ordinance, but was instead directed to reach out into the community to find partners, specifically in the faith community, to explore ideas and models. Solutions proved elusive, so in 2013, after deep consideration from the council, Policy and Services Committee, council passed an ordinance prohibiting human habitation of vehicles and directing staff to stay the enforcement of the ordinance for six months to allow for public education and outreach. Additionally, council allocated $250,000 for Santa Clara County in 2013 to address housing placement and social services for the unhoused. However, in December of 2013, Los Angeles was the subject of a legal challenge to their vehicle habitation ordinance, and council acted to delay the enforcement of our ordinance. In other words, we've never enacted the In other words, we've never enacted the ordinance. Tonight, we are being asked to repeal the prohibition of vehicle habitation. And I will turn to staff for additional information on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd. We don't have a formal staff report on this item. We are bringing it back to you because your prior actions called for it to come back at this time. The vehicle habitation ordinance is on the books in Palo Alto, but as Mayor Shepherd stated, it has never been enforced. Council's called upon now to make a decision about the ordinance and its future. This is essentially a policy question that calls on council to weigh competing policy interests and strongly-held views on both sides. We have given you some basic legal parameters that bear on the question. The litigation from earlier this year in the Ninth Circuit does mean that any vehicle-type ordinance that would be retained, we would expect to see a legal challenge. And we have, City Manager and I have, on balance, weighing all the issues, recommended going ahead and repealing the ordinance at this time. But should the council wish to retain some regulation in this area, my suggestion to you tonight would be to ask that we come back in a short timeframe with an ordinance that's more carefully tailored, taking into account the most recent guidance from the Ninth Circuit, both to ensure that everyone in the community is aware of exactly what the rule is, and also to increase the defensibility of the ordinance to a legal challenge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, the City Attorney spoke. For both of us, I did want to just make it clear, this was not just a recommendation of the City Attorney, but of myself also, after having worked hard on the issue earlier and the ordinance that the council did adopt, I think Molly's characterization is correct. You know, there's a lot to weigh here and to balance, but I've come down also on this, on the recommendation for you to consider repealing the ordinance, and we're here to answer questions in more detail if needed. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. I have a few speakers on this items, which I'm going to keep to three minutes. And we will have Winter Dellenbach to be followed by Cybeau Bouchon, and to be followed by Deirdre Moore. So, Winter.
I hope this is not only repealed, but not reworked, that an entirely different approach is brought to bear. For five years, a long time ago, all my clients were, had been diagnosed with mental, some sort of mental disability, mental illness, and quite a few of them were in jail, and all of them were very poor. And certainly not all unhoused people are mentally ill. It's an economic issue, it's not an issue of mental stability. But there is a percentage of them that are. And I was really upset when this ordinance passed with the kind of penalties attached to it, because I saw what happened to people that didn't have the money, that couldn't pay a fine, and that would end up in jail. And it was just such a tragic downward spiral, and frankly, these were the people, in my life's experience, that had the most hellish existence with very little hope. And I hope that our town never, out of trying to figure things out and have a plan, doesn't do something like this that adds to that kind of misery. That I, Molly Stump was quoted in the, some paper in the last few days, and it was a really nice quote, something about, you know, the issue is, rather, the approach is, how do we deal with this? And some sort of humane thing. Common sense, regulation that ends up as assisting and is sustainable, and meets the concerns that people in town may have, as long as they are reasonable concerns and not crazy paranoid concerns. So I would hope that this would be the end of it tonight, and that if you are going to continue to want to address it, it first and foremost is from an approach of sustainable assistance in addressing of peoples, of the situation, rather than a punitive sort of thing of just wanting it to stop. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cybeau Bouchon, to be followed by George Mills, to be followed by Diane Guinta.
Okay. So I always include my maiden name in front of the Bouchon, Lavolo. I know, it's very tough.
Well, I can see it. This is more clear.
It's okay. It's okay. I'm just making an initial, because I am definitely someone who thinks women need to have their own being. And I appreciate what Stephanie had to say about you, Mayor Shepherd, because I fully agree with it.
Thank you.
We've had a great time having you be mayor. About this ordinance, it seems to me that there's been a last-minute shift in what the staff had recommended. And I was here, I was planning to say, you know, thank you to the staff, but I'm not going to at this moment. This ordinance is totally unnecessary. I personally live in the Coverley area. I didn't see any of those transgressions. Maybe they happened in the evening. I don't go there in the evening, except for to go to foothill classes sometimes, and I still didn't see anything. But I did see a woman bedding down in the bushes in the rain in the middle of the winter, and that's what activated me. I didn't speak to her, you know, but I, it certainly hit me very hard. So, there's, the Heart and Home Collaborative Women's Shelter is having some difficulty this year to find spaces in churches to follow that Hotel de zinc model, where the churches at least provide, month-to-month, to shelter, and that was only for the women during the winter. So I think the police department has all of the resources it needs, and you may be looking for a fight, if you can, do not just go with the earlier, a report, which didn't shift to say, come and do something, to rework it. No, it's fine. It should be repealed tonight, and I ask you to vote that way. Thank you.
Thank you. George Mills, to be followed by Diane Guinta, to be followed by Oliver Terry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm George Mills. I was a member of the Palo Alto Friends Meeting. We were one of the religious congregations that considered having vehicle dwellers on their parking lot. We studied this in quite some depth as a community within our congregation, and we wrote an opinion piece which appeared under my name in the Palo Alto Weekly before the vote on the ban. I would like to emphasize a couple of points that we learned as a community. First of all, is that discrimination based on housing status is prohibited by the Palo Alto, whatever it is. City Charter?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. Which reads, "Freedom from arbitrary discrimination. It is the policy of the city of Palo Alto to protect and safeguard the right and opportunity of every person to be free from arbitrary discrimination on the basis of race, skin color, et cetera, et cetera, housing status among those." In addition, the fifth point that we put in our article noted that, in all the arguments for the ban, they were all about homelessness. There was very little rationale that dealt, had anything to do with vehicle dwelling itself. In fact, the ordinance exempts vehicle dwelling if you're a visitor from out of town. So, no discussion of why that vehicle dwelling is acceptable, and the other isn't, except that the other is conducted by people who don't own homes. Also, in the rationale, in the discussion in today's agenda, I circled about seven or eight, or, I don't know, large number of uses of the word unhoused, homeless. This has been an ordinance all about homelessness. It is not about vehicle dwelling. The ordinance that was passed is a discriminatory burden based on people who don't own homes. And it is a very good thing that this ordinance is being repealed. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Guinta, to be followed by Oliver Terry, to be followed by Diane Jones.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Diane Guinta, and I'm here both as a resident of Palo Alto for 24 years, and also as the volunteer coordinator at St. Mark's Church for the Hotel de zinc program. I've been involved in that program for many years, and I, because of that, I know the particular situations of many people in the community who are homeless, and I would like to urge you to repeal the vehicle habitation ordinance. I believe that what was articulated by the City Attorney and City Manager, stating that the similarity to the Los Angeles ordinance will lead to unnecessary expenditure of city funds, which could be better spent on helping people, rather than discriminating against them. And I also think that the ordinance, as we discussed at length 11 months ago, is extremely counter to the character of our city. I understand completely that we had a problem with the situation at Coverley, and there were things that were occurring there that were detrimental to the community, but I think that situation has been solved. And as I look at the commentary of the few people who have written in support of maintaining the ordinance or reinstating it, I think that there may be situations that can be addressed by the actions of the police department to figure out what it is that the people who are living on certain streets are doing that disturb the community. I'd also like to point out that, for those of us who've been involved with trying to help the actual people who were dwelling at Coverley, there was a pally mom with a daughter who was still in school and trying to graduate. And for seven months, people in the community tried to help this family find housing. They did finally find housing, but it took an extraordinary amount of effort and a lot of funds from people in the community to see that that couple, the mom and the daughter, were housed. And we really don't want to be in a situation where we're putting people in situations that are that vulnerable, under the prejudice and consequences of this ordinance. So thank you for considering the repeal, and I hope that you do repeal it. It's what we should do in Palo Alto.
Thank you. Oliver Terry, to be followed by Diane Jones.
Hi, how's it going? It's getting kind of cold out, isn't it? So, I go to Foothill College. I'm trying to become a dental hygienist, and then move on to dentistry from there. Or I could just book ladder, but, so, this is probably one of the things that is most troubling to me, is that it's a little unconstitutional. I mean, like, I agree with a couple of the speakers here, and it's probably the best idea to just get rid of it altogether. But I would like to be able to, like, somehow try to get myself into a place to live. I currently live in my van with my mother, and I'm further in my education. I'm doing everything I can. I'm working with Downtown Streets team, and I'm doing everything I can. I just don't want this whole vehicle dwelling thing to potentially put a mark on my legal record and offset my entire life. So, you know, it's just a little, little minor thing there. I mean, y'all have kids, I want to have kids, I want to create a house. I'd love to live in the city that I was conceived in. You know, it's an amazing place. I love, but you get on with the tree out there. It's really great. And so, on behalf of that, I mean, Foothill College over there, it's a pretty good, pretty good place. I went to do a little bit of metalwork over there with making jewelry with Edith Summers. It was pretty fun, pretty fun. It's a nice place over there. And basically, just reconsider that, just think a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane Jones, to be followed by C. Ready.
Hi, Diane Elizabeth Jones. Hi, guys. I remember last year, I was up here and I cried in front of y'all and embarrassed myself and accidentally ended up in the newspapers. I just want to say, when you're poor or homeless, you explore all your options for places to sleep. Is it clean? Is it safe? Is it warm? If you cannot afford a rental, you have a vehicle if you are lucky, and I hope that you guys don't take that option away from us. Going forward, my son, he just talked, is attending Foothill College, and we are sleeping in our vehicle. He studies at Starbucks. He studies at McDonald's till they close each night, and I can already hear him saying to his children how lazy they are for that he had to overcome homelessness, go to college, which is awesome, and he did it sleeping in his car. And I hope that's a good situation in the future. But we're doing everything to get out of our situation. We are working with Downtown Streets team in Sunnyvale. We're in good standing with, good standing with them, which is Streets team in Sunnyvale. We're in good standing with them, which is awesome. And my son, he is doing well in college, despite his speaking skills. He did pretty good. He will graduate, and I am very proud of him. If you keep the ban and we get caught in our vehicle, sleeping, it will ruin his record permanently. He will lose his ability to go to most colleges with a record. And I will lose my disability income because you're not allowed to have a crime committed. They'll take your disability away. So that's just a horrible option for both of us. To sum it up, this winter, we have no winter shelter. We will freeze in our vehicle, but we will die without our vehicle. And without a vehicle, we lose our place to sleep safely. Thank you.
Thank you. C. Reddy, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Palo Alto citizens, as well as the city council and the management team here. It's a great thing. The city attorney and Jim have agreed to recommend it to repeal. I think we need to go a step further and really look at the homelessness and how we can help and be number one or two in the country to be proactive in trying to solve. So I was listening to the radio the other day. There's a gentleman that was in El Paso. There was something about passing food to the homeless, and, not El Paso, I think it's in Florida, all that. He has a solution. It says 90% of the time, these people need help, and they need to have a help with a comprehensive plan that includes not only shelter, food, this and that, but there's nine other things. So I think we want to look beyond that and try to work that solution. You know, it's an awful thing to have to park somewhere and leave, and it's just, we want to go one step further and try to find ways to, I think we should delegate this to Stanford, actually, to come up with some, they have 9,500 acres, and we have only, you know, what we have. So I think altogether, I know I'm showing up here a lot more than I should, and Aram asked me to speak on this behalf, and I would really like to, for us, to start coming up with some solutions, partial solutions, vacant buildings, parking lots, and the responsibility is on the people, too. You know, they need to also do some other things. You know, I've seen, I've picked up a lot of trash on the streets, including Litton Plaza, many nights at 2:00 in the morning, you know. They're not homeless, but they're drunk. So I think we want to keep it clean. We want Palo Alto to be Palo Alto. So I think the responsibility lies on both sides, you know, how to improve each other and help each other and be nice to each other and have a nice Thanksgiving for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Wayne Douglas.
Good evening, council members. I'm pretty confident that you're going to rescind this nonproductive ordinance. I may be wrong. And I'd like to go a little farther. The ordinance itself, to me, was a nonstarter. You still have in Palo Alto some Republicans, some Libertarians, some people who see as an unconscionable invasion of personal privacy that a city government would tell you what to do with your private property. And I think that that will become clear. What concerns me is something you do have a right to do. You do have a right to say where in Palo Alto any vehicle may be parked, where it may not be parked. You have a right to do that. And I'd like to address that rather than just the ordinance. It seems to me that it's in the interest of the community as a whole that every homeless people, not, every homeless person not be out lying around in the wilderness, that people have some place. We should appreciate the fact that the car dwellers are helping themselves. Honestly, if I were in this situation where I had to find a home at a shelter by getting to be first in line at 6:30 in the morning at the opportunity center, otherwise no place to live at night, I don't see how I'd manage. To be in the car is something that can easily be regulated. You could very easily have said, "These cars may stay at Cumberley until daybreak." At daybreak, the monitor goes around, makes sure that nobody has left any candy bar wrappers, and out they go. And the same with the city garages. I don't see any problem there. What you want is people contained in someplace and preferably sequestered, where you can keep an eye on them. To think that this should be left up to the faith community, this is a secular society. And I think that it is the responsibility of the city, whether or not it's the fault of the city for building industry without houses, as I think, but many of you don't, whether or not that's true. A decent city, a civilized city, will have some place to put these people so that they aren't messing up the streets. Please, please, figure out at least, first of all, a place where they can go. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Douglas, to be followed by Aram James.
I'm just going to roll my nose. I'll be right back. Do you need tissue?
Does anybody not know where I stand on this issue? So, make my campaign a success. And if you need help in killing this ordinance, I will cheerfully drive a wooden stake through its heart once you're done, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aram James, to be followed by Edie Keating.
I wish Karen Holman was here tonight to vote. I'm here to, of course, support and encourage you to repeal the vehicle habitation ordinance. I want to talk about it within the context of the Constitution. There may be strong emotions on both sides of the issue, but in the end, the Constitution trumps our strong opinions, our strong emotions, our prejudices, be they conscious or unconscious. Whether it's a law, an anti-miscegenation law, a law supporting segregation of the races, the black codes, Jim Crow laws, anti-gay and homophobic legislation, or laws designed to discriminate against individuals based on their housing status, ultimately, the Constitution is the tiebreaker. So that's what I'm betting on, is that you're going to follow the Constitution, that you're going to respect the well-drafted opinion of the Ninth Circuit. It hits some of the constitutional violations that could be raised, the Fourteenth Amendment, due process clause, and the equal protection clause. But as William Safford's wonderful piece that I sent you today, Sleepless in Palo Alto, pointed out, William Safford is a colleague of mine, a friend of mine, and an extraordinary lawyer who spends a lot of free time representing the unhoused. But as he said, if we really need to get down and dirty and end up litigating this, there's a lot of other issues, compelling constitutional issues that can be raised. I would also draw your attention, not only to the Desert Rain opinion, but also the dissenting opinion in Toby versus the City of Santa Ana in 1995, and that was drafted by probably the most esteemed member of the California Supreme Court of all time, and that's Stanley Mosk. And Stanley Mosk's dissenting opinion, which is probably out of that Santa Ana anti-camping opinion, is really legendary. A few words, if I can, from his dissenting opinion. "The indirect effect of the ordinance may prove even more invidious." As one amicus brief suggested, a former mayor, and as a former mayor points out, "Ordinances like the Santa Ana one encourage an unhealthy and ultimately futile competition among cities to impose comparable restrictions in order to avoid becoming a refuge for homeless persons." Thank you. Read the opinion if you can, and please repeal this act. Thank you.
Thank you. Edie Keating, to be followed by Barbara Goodwin.
Hello. I support repeal of the vehicle, oh, I support repeal of the vehicle dwelling ordinance. I wish no one was homeless, but that is not our reality. I ask you not to penalize the homeless who live in cars and cause no impact on the community. There are some. You just haven't noticed them. The last 11 months since the ordinance was suspended has given us data, mainly that Palo Alto has not become a magnet and that there have not been car dweller-related police issues, at least not from my read of the local papers. There certainly are some large vehicles near Bolware Park. We limit home size with FAR and setbacks. Should we limit vehicle size? I think that is an acceptable option to explore. Should we cause all homeless individuals to be unable to have vehicles within the city limits? No. I hope you will join me in saying no, and I hope as you consider alternatives to the ban that I believe you will repeal tonight, that you will continue to say there must be some place for our share of the homeless in our community and that it is okay for them to have vehicles. Some community members will say, or have said in their comments to you in the package, that you should ban the homeless before they cause harm. If I convince you that I fear tall men, will you ban tall men? You can't ban a whole class of people, and I hope that you will keep that in mind as you consider your options tonight and in the future. Finally, the point we may most likely agree on. Enacting policy that leads to certainly being sued and almost certainly losing is a poor use of $500,000 of city funds. Thank you for, I hope, repealing the ban tonight.
Thank you. Barbara Goodwin, to be followed by Lois Salo.
Hello, hello. My name is Barbara Goodwin. I, of course, don't want to see this ban continue. I don't want to see the penalization go forward. You've got to make a decision. I'm just curious, in the room right now, how many people want to see this ordinance changed? I'm sure there are more out there that couldn't make it tonight. Anyway, it's not enough, I think, just to say that we're going to enact this legislation. I'd like to see, you know, this program in Santa Barbara, very, very popular, and $500,000 you folks spent, they spend one, $75,000, but they get federal money, okay? Santa Barbara has a program for the homeless in cars, the unhoused in cars, and it's been in effect for a while. And $175,000, that sounds pretty good. So I wonder, have any of you had the energy to get down there to Santa Barbara to see this, this program? Aaron James has been there, I know, and there might be others that have been there. I went to a symposium one day, and the woman that's running the program talked at length. The big thing is to get the neighbors on board, because the neighbors are, they're the ones that you have to deal with when they criticize. So I don't want to belabor this. I know some of you have been exposed to it, but it's worth exploring, because it is successful and not all that expensive, and it's the humane thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, and Lois Salo is the final speaker on this.
Hello, I am Lois Salo, and I am a resident of Palo Alto. I'm glad the city attorney wants to rescind the ban. This is the constitutional correct thing to do. People have said that illegal acts are being committed. Current laws can and should deal with illegal acts. The Constitution supports the right of all people to use the commons. I am of Jewish parentage. If my family had not emigrated, I would have been killed in the Holocaust. I support that the homeless are the new Jews facing discrimination and deportation. Our religions support charity for the less fortunate. Perhaps the discrimination due to support property values, I think that may be an issue here, but in 20 years, this expensive real estate will be worth nothing because it will be under a foot of water unless we work together to stop global warming. So I think that should be our real thrust of all of the people in the community. Please rescind this ban. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the speakers. Councilmember Berman, you'd like to kick this off?
Only Lois can so adeptly fold two very important issues into one, one three-minute talk. So let me start off by apologizing to the mayor and to the members of the public and my colleagues for the interruption earlier. I was trying to look up a legal term on my phone, and I guess the last page I had up was ESPN, and it started playing a video, which that was remarkably embarrassing.
It was annoying.
It was.
Ouch.
It was a race.
I'm going to miss Gail next year. I agree. Unfortunately, too late. Let me start off by asking the city attorney a couple of questions, or maybe just one question. If we were to not rescind the ordinance tonight and start enforcing it, well, I guess these are kind of rhetorical questions, do you, is the likelihood of a lawsuit quite high, in your opinion? And let me know if these are questions that you'd prefer not to answer.
Right. At some point, obviously, we need to give sensitive legal advice in a different format than tonight's meeting, but I can say that a legal team did come forward in the late months of 2013, right? And identified themselves as, you know, willing and able and set up to go ahead and bring a legal challenge, and we do think that one is very likely if Palo Alto retains this ordinance and begins to enforce it.
And in situations that you've seen in the past, obviously none exactly like this, but in similar circumstances, would you imagine that the first thing they would do would file a motion to have an injunction stopping us from enforcing the ban during the course of a legal proceeding? And I mean...
Before the council took action to extend the stay of enforcement, that was what they told us that they were going to do, yes.
Okay. So it seems like, you know, the options that we have tonight are keep the ban, start enforcing it, and then all likelihood, face an injunction, therefore not being able to enforce it, assuming a judge agrees, and I'm going to put you off the hook and say that my guess is a judge would, and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars litigating this, or we can repeal the ban tonight. As one of two council members who voted against this ban in the first place, and then the only one who's here tonight, I was having a tough time deciding how much I wanted to talk, and I'm going to keep my comments to a minimum, which is regardless of whether or not you disagree with the merits of the ordinance, or whether or not you recognize that the legal landscape has changed dramatically, and enforcing the ordinance, you know, I think would be, lead to a large waste of money by the city. The end result should be that the repeal of this ordinance. And so I think, you know, one good thing that has come out of this whole ordeal, which has been very tough for everybody, for colleagues, for people in the community on both sides of the issue, one good thing that came out of it is the discussion that we've had about, you know, the unhoused and homelessness issues, which are only getting worse as housing prices go even higher. We've also, to a certain extent, put our money where our mouth is in regards to allocating $250,000 for outreach to folks who are unhoused and starting to try to help find housing in conjunction with the county. And I think a lot of the concern that led to the creation of this ordinance and the passing of the ordinance in the first place has been ameliorated by other means. And so that's not to say that problems won't arise, but when they do, I think that either that's a conversation that we should have at that time, or we should use existing, you know, ordinances to address those problems. But I think, given the current legal climate and given the fact that this ordinance hasn't even been enforced yet, and I think a lot of the concerns from our residents have been kind of allayed by other things that have happened, I think it makes sense to repeal the ordinance. So I'll move that council adopt an ordinance repealing the prohibition on vehicle habitation, ordinance number 5206, codified at Palo Alto Municipal Code Section 9.06.06. ordinance number 5206, codified at Palo Alto Municipal Code Section 9.06.010, enforcement of which has been continuously stayed since its adoption in August 2013, while continuing to monitor conditions and impacts on residents.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by councilmember, let's see, Berman, and seconded by councilmember Price. Would you like to speak any further to your motion?
No, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Price, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I concur with every comment made by my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Berman, and the very thoughtful and insightful and compassionate comments made by the community. There are many people who suffer in these circumstances, and as you probably gather, when we originally went through all of these discussions, it was a very stressful and trying discussion for everyone involved. And I'm not seeking sympathy here, I'm just saying it was extremely challenging, because we have lots of different kinds of stakeholders and lots of different kinds of community interests, which is very challenging to balance. But I feel it's an honor to second this motion. I think, given all the comments made earlier, and the comments made by staff and by the community, this is the right thing to do, and this is the compassionate thing to do. My only concern, and it's not related to the issue per se on the ordinance, is, once again, we're, I feel like we're déjà vu all over again, meaning, okay, if we go in this direction, which is advisable, the issue still remains, where do people get services that really help them? And the nonprofits who do a commendable job, the county who makes great efforts, but nothing seems to be comprehensive enough, detailed enough, not enough resources, et cetera. So I am hoping, and I will make comments later, because I would like to make another, make an amendment to the motion, but I have a question first, which is, the item before us is the proposed repeal of the ordinance. If my comments are related to directing staff to address looking at different alternative programs and services, would that be germane at this meeting, or should that be deferred to another meeting? And that's my question of the city attorney.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. It is permissible within the scope of this item to make a brief comment requesting that a future item come back on a future agenda. It's not appropriate for the council to take action on another topic tonight, because the item before you is agendized very narrowly.
Okay, so I'd like to make a friendly amendment. It's a two-part motion. The first part I've seconded, but I'd like to make an amendment and add a second portion, if I may, and then you can listen to it and see what you think. Okay. To direct staff to identify additional programs serving the homeless, including the Santa Barbara program, and I don't have the specific name, I don't recall, and other city and/or nonprofit partnerships that have been successfully used in other communities.
Can we look to the city attorney before we go further?
So I think that's an item that would need to be placed on a future council agenda for, to notice to the public that that, considering spending city staff time and resources on that item, is something that the council is going to discuss, so that everyone has notice of that.
So could the second part then be request that staff come back at a future meeting to address the comments I've made just now? Is that, would that be sufficient?
The council can consider tonight whether it wishes to set that as a future agenda item, yes.
Okay. So that would be what my proposal is. And just quickly, as I mentioned before...
Hang on, I want to get clear here. So do we have an amendment, or don't we?
So I'm hearing that she's proposing an amendment.
Right.
That this, the item, as I've described it, to come back to the city council for further discussion.
And just so we're clear, to draw the distinction a little bit between the way it was initially framed and the way it's tempting to be reframed, and what the city attorney was talking about, is we would do no work in relation to this topic. This would be placed on a future agenda, and then the council would decide to act on that, or modify it, or whatever. We wouldn't be doing preliminary research on these issues when we bring the item back, until we bring it back and you actually ask us to look at it.
So you'd have something more robust to discuss?
Right. And I think the city attorney is working with the clerk to get the language right on this.
Is this, can I ask, you know, city attorney or city manager, is this something that can also be brought up in councilmember comments at the end of the meeting? So with due respect to councilmember Price, I'd be more comfortable if we kept this cleaner and brought that up at the end of the meeting and not as a part of this. I'd just prefer to keep this as a very clean motion, and then have that discussion at the end of the meeting, which, which I would wholly support at the end of the meeting, but I don't think now is necessarily the right time for it.
Okay. My only comment is that I'm concerned when the end of the meeting will take place, and...
So I guess I'm not excited. I mean, totally understand your concern, but we can still, you'll be here and I'll be here at the end of the meeting.
I hope so. Okay. Okay, I have an 8:00 AM flight tomorrow morning. Okay, fine.
If you're not, I'll bring you down.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. As long as I can be assured, because, again, the same issue is, so what are the actions we're going to take that have some meaning and have some positive outcome? Okay, thank you.
All right. Going back to lights, councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a question about what's in the motion suggested by staff. It says repeal the ordinance while continuing to monitor conditions. Now, I guess it's just a factual question, monitoring conditions. We did vote at the same time this ordinance to spend $250,000. That was a year and three months ago, so we have spent a goodly portion of that, and it raises the question of, you know, what have we learned while spending that money and monitoring it? My understanding of what we spent at that time was to be leveraged funds, that we were contributing a portion, which would be matched or bettered by county funds, and that there would be an active county program in the North County. So the motion, as suggested by the staff, said continue to monitor conditions. What have we learned from our current monitoring? Is there a report? Is there data?
So it might be that community services staff can provide some specific information about the monies that council authorized, and how they've been expended and results from those efforts. But just to clarify the motion, the action that council's being asked to take today is to repeal the ordinance. The reference to monitoring conditions and impacts is really a reflection of the ongoing administrative work that occurs under the city manager with respect to all of the work in community services and the other work that city staff do to address the myriad of issues related to this topic. So there isn't a specific direction there, and the item is really not agendized for an extensive exploration of those issues, although it would be appropriate if the community service staff is available.
Yeah, I guess I do find that a little odd, because the staff report, which is two pages long, specifies that these two motions were passed at the same time, and that they were, for the council in passing them, had the intention of those two being linked.
And so I'm trying to, looking for what level of specificity you want, because I think that this phrase applies to both aspects of the original motion. One was, if there is a repeal of this ban, what is the impact on residents related to some of the complaints that were, that the city received in the first place, and that the city receives? And then, secondly, what is the status, in a sense, or the impact of the funding that the city, the $250,000 that the council provided? Now, that being said, the last thing's pretty easy for us to ultimately report back on, because it went for a very specific purpose and a very specific program, and I think in no way was it designed to address the whole range of homeless issues, but to provide a small bit of relief as it related to housing.
Yeah, I just make the point, because it was a two-year grant, we're well into the second year of it, and the budget, which is currently being, for next year, which is being addressed, will make decisions about this. So it seems to me at some point, along with this ordinance, comes a report on conditions, impacts, and so on. So I find it hard to separate the two.
So if I just might add, I mean, if we could just assume that we would be reporting to the council on that aspect of it, I think that's the best way to handle it right now. I don't think you need anything special, and certainly as we even get in the budget discussions for this next year, it's really appropriate for us to identify the, you know, effectiveness of the first year and the second, the funding and the implications for the second year.
Okay, hang on. Turn my page. Councilmember Scharf.
So funny enough, I had a similar question, just a little different take on it, of councilmember Schmidt. When I read the further development section of the staff report, it had not, it sort of implied that one of the reasons why we're repealing this is because this outreach has been effective. That was sort of the implication. But yet, there's no indication in here that the outreach, that spending the $250,000 has been effective. There's no sense of any metrics. So I'm hoping that you will come back to us and tell us what we got for our money, where it's gone, how it's been spent. It seemed to be spent on hiring somebody primarily, and, you know, on something that we basically committed for two years. I was concerned about how that goes, and I was wondering how much of that actually got to help the homeless and all of that. So I hope you'll come back and address those questions as well. I guess I also had a slightly different take than councilmember Berman, and I support repeal of the ordinance. I'm going to say that upfront, I would have seconded the motion. So I'll ask the city attorney some questions. Does Menlo Park still have their ordinance?
My recollection off the top of my head is that Menlo Park has a different type of regulatory program, which is a no overnight parking program in most of their residential neighborhoods. Okay, Mayor Shepherd says all of the residential neighborhoods. I took a quick look at the survey work that had been done when this issue was dealt with in extensive set of meetings a year ago, and going back to two years ago. And we did find at that time that most jurisdictions in San Mateo and Santa Clara County do have some type of regulation. Some are of the no overnight parking type, and that, of course, means no one parks on the street at night. And so it, the conduct that is banned is quite different. But then there is a group of cities that have vehicle habitation ordinances quite similar to the one that Palo Alto enacted, and then there are a few cities that have no regulation of either type.
So are they moving to rework their ordinances or repeal them, or are people just ignoring this?
As far as we know, they're not. And as you know, councilmember Scharf, when there is a development in the law of the type of the Ninth Circuit decision announcing a rule that applied specifically to Los Angeles ordinance, that ordinance is a 30-year-old ordinance, it has archaic language that's not similar to any of the Bay Area ordinances that we looked at, then lawyers will disagree about the extent to which it applies. You've heard comments in the room tonight from members of the public that read that Ninth Circuit decision very broadly, and would believe that many of these cities' ordinances are vulnerable to challenge. But as you know, these things are not self-executing. Some group of plaintiffs will need to decide it's, you know, a worthy case and worth their time to go ahead and challenge ordinances in order to bring them into, you know, a place where a jurisdiction would be required then to look at that. So I think that's where we are. But we know in Palo Alto, because of the timing, really, that we were one of the later jurisdictions to look at dealing with this issue, that the plaintiffs' legal community has focused on this community and has indicated that they will bring that kind of a challenge here.
So the reason I'm going to support repeal of this is that I don't believe we've had many complaints in the last year that we haven't done this. At least I haven't heard of that many. I guess I wanted to ask, have we had, you know, two, three, four, zero? How many complaints have we had?
So the council should know that there are some complaints of the similar type that prompted this discussion to begin several years ago. And to your earlier question about $250,000 being so effective that all the problems are solved, I think council also needs to know that that level of funding never could accomplish that goal and has not. As far as you asking sort of what is the level and the number, we don't, our ability to understand that is really talking to our community service folks, and our parks people, and our police officers about what is going on out there in the community. We don't keep statistical tracking, and we really shouldn't do that, because it require, would require a sort of classification that we don't want our emergency service workers to make as they're doing their work, and we don't want citizens to make it either. So we don't have that kind of hard numerical report to give you this evening. You know, I think it is fair to say that some of the very acute concerns that motivated the council a year ago, or a year and a half ago when we initially adopted the ordinance, have eased some due to other circumstances. But there still are some concerns in the community, and we will have to continue to work on those. Citizens' concerns are legitimate, and calls for service will continue to come in, and we will need to work with both our police department and our community services folks to help citizens resolve their concerns.
All right. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Ness.
Thanks. I was chair of Policy and Services when we took this up last year. It was a very contentious issue. And as I recall, though, the reason that it became contentious and that it got onto our agenda was because of Coverley. And Coverley at that point was, as someone called it, a de facto campground, and it was very distressing to the people who were in Green Meadow and the Charleston Meadows area and so forth. And because it's private property, regardless of our leasing, and it belongs to the school district, my understanding is it's far better. We have friends who walk through there on a regular basis and say it's, feels far more safe, which was one of their concerns, and the kids are not worried about walking through there as they go over to the market and so forth. Just to ask a couple of questions to our attorney, were there ever any fines that were put out this year? Because this was essentially, this was stayed, this was put into a corner for a year. I don't recall that we ever fined anyone, did we?
Never. The ordinance was never applied, it was never enforced.
So I think that's really important, because some people have mentioned the fines. One other concern that I have, and it probably happened with all the rest of you, we've had lots of email on this. We had lots of email last year. No one turned up tonight who said, actually, we'd like you to keep the ban in place, even though I probably had 50 emails asking me to keep the ban in place. It's interesting that many of you who see this in the same light come forth, but many others have stayed home tonight, and I'm always intrigued by that. I think it reflects our community and the fact that we really want to be humanitarian... I, I think it reflects our community and the fact that we really want to be humanitarian. We really want to support those who are homeless. And at the same time, some people feel very uncomfortable with the entire issue. As far as the county, I remember us having a very long discussion on that last year. And it does say in our report tonight that there now is a group hired, I don't think any of you have mentioned this yet, which is the P H C, the Peninsula Healthcare Connections. Minka, would you nod if that's effective? You don't need to come up, but just nod, just do a big nod and say, yes, it's working or no, it isn't.
They're just starting their work, but yes, they're actively working.
Okay. All of these things take a long time. We explored this last year, as I recall, for several meetings, not just one time, but several meetings we looked at this. I called Santa Barbara, and as I remember, because I had a long talk with them, Santa Barbara is a nonprofit, it's an NPO, and it's part of the county, and it utilizes parking lots which are on the outskirts, either of the city or of the county. And if anyone knows any different and wants to tell us.
Some of them are actually in the center of the city.
I'm going to have to be able to recognize you, sorry.
Give me the information later.
I've already given it to you in brochures, details.
I realize you have. Thank you, Mr. James. So I know that there are programs out there. And when we get to the end tonight, and I know that Councilmember Price will bring this up again, I think probably what we need to do this time, Gail, is to be more definitive in what we want to have done. We talked about exploring it last year, but as you recall, we passed it. And then it was stayed, as I recall, because of the decisions that were made. And now we find ourselves in a, in a very different spot. This is a tough one. I've listened to all of you. I am going to support it, but I will, I would not feel comfortable unless Gail had made that suggestion that we can follow later tonight and that we really become serious about how we handle this in our community. It's important. One last, one last question of, of the attorney. How do you see the difference between no parking allowed at night in residential neighborhoods and how we are currently dealing with this? And the reason I'm asking that in particular is we're about to do a residential parking permit program. I'm wondering if that may in some way, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'd like us to be thinking, we're getting to an R P P. It, I think that there will be some issues regarding that and, and the permits.
Permit, permit type of, of parking restrictions or no parking restrictions are of a very different type legally. Very, very briefly, the issue that was raised before the Ninth Circuit with the vehicle habitation ban in Los Angeles is a question of the clarity of the law. And that type of, of vulnerability does not exist in a, in a very clear and straightforward, you may not park any car on the street between this hour and that hour. So it, it, it has a very different legal status for a complex series of reasons. Perhaps we should discuss it over tea.
Okay. Because I, I am concerned with us going into an R P P and whether or not that does in, in some way either exacerbate the problem or alter the problem, whatever it may be. Yes, we'll discuss that then at another point and also with, with our planning department. So with that, as I said, I, I am sorry we didn't hear the other side at all tonight. And, but I'm convinced that, as the attorney has written in here, she talks about the inconstitutionality. And Councilmember Berman earlier on mentioned the, the great cost involved at the same time. And I, I think that's a, a serious consideration as well as the humanitarian consideration. So, thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
I move a substitute motion that we refer this back to the city attorney to prepare an updated ordinance to include some of the suggestions she's made, also to consider whether we should include differentials, excuse me, based on the size of the vehicle, as one person here suggested tonight. Here none, so I will use my time to, here no second that is, to say that I think this is a mistake for a whole variety of reasons, and I think that our community is not going to like this. First, we've heard many people say that this is unconstitutional. One panel of the Ninth Circuit, which is composed of about 30 different judges, has said so as to a different ordinance in Los Angeles. There is no final determination as to whether this is an unconstitutional ordinance, and there wouldn't be for many years. So let's not assume the conclusion. Second, I want to say that I think that the gentleman from the Friends was absolutely right when he says we shouldn't refer to this as just about homeless. It's about vehicle dwellers, and I agree with that. We found when we had this discussion last year that there weren't just homeless people living in cars, but there were actually some people who preferred it as a lifestyle. And living in an RV, for example, is, may not be a hardship at all. There are some very fancy RVs. Determine whether somebody is having a hardship, whether it's really homeless or is making a lifestyle choice, is beyond what our police should be doing. It's not, they should not be trying to figure out who is impoverished and who isn't. It's just not their, their task. So we need to have a clean, bright line for them. Because my experience in talking to our citizens is that many start out by saying, oh, yes, we shouldn't have the ban. Then if you ask the question, well, how would you feel about having one, two, three, four cars, RVs, whatever, staying on your street on a pretty regular basis? Then they say, oh, no, I don't want that. So it's sort of like, it's okay if it's in some other part of town, as long as it's not on my street. Well, that's not a policy program that any city should support. The idea that we should have additional programs for people who really need housing, I support to some degree. As Councilmember Schmidt has argued eloquently in the past, it's not our responsibility. The social welfare agency in our area is the county, not the city. That we can make some contribution, fine, but that's not where our tax money is supposed to be going. And to think that we can solve the homeless problem, I think is, just doesn't make any sense. The, that we can work in cooperation with the county and other agencies, sure, and I think we should. But I don't think we should take the lead in abolishing this ordinance. I think we'd be sent, they're going to be sending a message to people who want to sleep in their cars or RVs or whatever, trucks, that Palo Alto is open to that. And I think that we're going to find that we've created a problem that we didn't need to do. Lastly, I'm amazed, frankly, that people are using this argument that we should bow to pressure, that various legal organizations have said they're going to give us a fight, maybe we'll lose, maybe we'll win. But we've had that many times in the past from, and we've had a pretty good record. So if we believe this is good policy, I don't think we should cave to threats from a lawyer or a group of lawyers. So with those reasons, I will not support the motion.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, some of my comments are to give my suggestions on where the subsequent guidance to the staff for framing an upcoming action item might, the elements that might be included within that discussion. But first, I wanted to step back. I've heard a few different characterizations of what we had as a problem. And as I recollect it, we had basically two problems that the community identified. The situation at Coverley, which had been a site for a certain number of car dwellers for a very long time, and then that problem grew. So really, in my understanding, the problem at Coverley wasn't the baseline level of dwellers. It was both the number and the behavior of these additional dwellers that happened in the previous year or two before we enacted this. The second thing was that there were issues that had been going on in neighborhoods, and they were really about the more egregious illegal behavior and that we had limited means to enforce our existing ordinances. And in responding to both of those issues, we instead went in a pretty extreme direction. We went from one end of doing too little for too long to enacting this ban at both Coverley and on all streets. So I was, expressed disappointment at the time that those are the options we were being given and, and, but it had gotten to the point where much of the community had reached a boiling point on the problem. And instead of, of calibrating a response, we, we had a pretty severe one. So I'd like to see a number of things included in this upcoming item and will, but I just want to speak to them and then when we, these are not a motion, but just lay them on the table for consideration. One is whether we should convene a stakeholder group, perhaps led by H R C and staff, to identify the issues and prospective solutions. Second is whether there's a way that we could limit vehicle sizes, was previously stated. Third, whether we should be engaging with surrounding communities on a subregional approach. And so if we're looking at providing certain services, whether we collaborate with our neighboring communities on those services. And then, and then the other thing that may have already been covered, but, but what alternative ways might we have to provide essential services for vehicle dwellers, toilets and showers principally? And what would be the most efficient and cost-effective way with the least impact on the community to do those kinds of things? So those are the things that I'm going to be looking to be in, allowed for in the upcoming agenda item. And I don't think we'll need to stipulate them. I think we just need to frame the discussion broadly enough to allow for those discussions.
Okay, well, I would like to chime in here as well and finish this up. I was very impressed by the debates that were going on when we put this ordinance in, into our municipal code. I was impressed by the fact that we were not going to activate it for six months, that we were, that we had a strategic plan to begin to identify and find the spot for people who were at Coverley, for example, to find a spot for them to have a life besides living in a vehicle or not being housed somehow. I was surprised at the need that we had, even though I think I've had at least two, if not three emails to me this year that I've referred over to police regarding vehicles that have been parked too long or actually living with lumber and, and equipment spread out on the sidewalk and, and taking advantage of the public space, which I think can still happen. And I also remember hearing about people looking as though they were renting out vehicles for the night. And it appeared that there were a number of vehicles that they were renting out for the night for people who didn't want to drive home into the valley or wherever they lived. These were the types of, these are the types of issues that I, that could still be going on or have been resolved. But I know that we do get these emails from time to time. I pass them on to the, to the city, to the police department to go and talk to the owner of the vehicle. And yet, what impressed me the most at this time was the fact that although people are living in their car, and I will be supporting the repeal of this ordinance, I just want to be clear about that because I do believe that people should have that right to be able to be safe in a car. The thing that I found lacking was, since we do live in a fairly civil society here in Palo Alto, where there is a lot of order to how we live and what we expect to have is an amenity when we live, which is hot water and restroom facilities and that type of thing, that that is a gap when you live in a vehicle, that it's hard to find that experience to be able to get some of the business of living taken care of. But also that they're unidentified. They're not citizens that, I think the Santa Barbara ordinance has a permit that you have to have so that you do show up and you become identified so that we know what's going on in our community and we can begin the process of identifying next steps and needs. And I think that that's important, to have citizens engaged and being part of our community. And that's what I think is distressing to me, that, that people have needs. And yet, we don't have an ability to knock on a door like we can a regular home to find out if there's a need that somebody has, that this was, the way I understood this ordinance was to provide some type of an ability to be able to legally knock on the door of a car and ask, what can I do to help you? Can I get you connected to services, that type of thing? And so I would like to see it go back to some, I think Policy and Services would be much more effective than coming to, back to full council, to see if there is that spot of being able to recognize how to get people identified so that we can consider what the need is and how to address that need more strategically than just the anecdotal information that we get in from residents from time to time about a vehicle that appears to be having an experience of either somebody living there or renting out or something like that. And so I look forward to that. I also learned from when we had supervisor submitting here that Santa Clara County is spending money for six beds in San Mateo County in East Palo Alto because of the armory that's shutting down in Sunnyvale and the need that we have for cold weather shelter. So the borders are being crossed over so that it's not exclusively just something we have to take care of in Santa Clara County. And I think that the three cities of Menlo Park, Palo Alto and East Palo Alto could put that on their agenda because I know I started the meetings again this year with the, between the mayors and the city managers to find out how we can develop that type of program even further so we're not just looking inside Santa Clara County and then all of a sudden have a creek that separates us from the need across the, across the creek and across the street. So with that, I will be supporting this amendment and I will be supporting the agenda item at the end of the evening to have this brought back to council in some way next year to keep moving forward with finding solutions for helping those that need to be housed. So let's go ahead and vote on the ordinance. The motion, I'm sorry, the motion. And this is the motion to repeal the ordinance of vehicle dwelling, vehicle habitation. And that motion carries with Councilmember Klein voting no and Councilmember Holman absent. And thank you very much tonight for those that showed up for this. And we're going to move on to item number 12, as I've announced before, is, is, is going to be postponed to December 1st. We'll be hearing the J G N F brochure and making a decision. And we do have one speaker on that. And if you speak tonight, this is Winter Dellenbach, then next on the 1st, she went, she left?
Yep.
Okay. Winter's not here. Yeah, and she can speak next time. Okay. And we're going to go ahead and clear the room before we go into the next item. Clear the room. So we'll take the next item up in a few minutes, which is the review of the Civic City Hall remodel project.
And the Palo Alto City Council tonight has repealed the vehicle habitation ordinance that was, that was put. that was that was put forward. Larry Klein argued that there is no evidence that it's unconstitutional despite a decision on a Los Angeles case. It was a motion by Berman, supported by Price, Price mentioning that it was compassionate to do this. And Price wanted to do a follow-up on what can be done, but it was Berman who asked her to keep this clean. And but we will be hearing from Gail Price at the end, who's going to be making a motion, probably bringing that back to the Policy and Services Committee tonight. This was an ordinance that has gone for several months. It was summed up pretty well by Pat Burt, who mentioned the two prongs of the ordinance was that there was a growing population in Coverly of people living in cars that led to a lot of problems, particularly of being able to enforce that. And then the ordinance also about cars parked out in front of your where people are living in in front of where you live. But it was Larry Klein who opposed this. He said, when you ask people, do you want an vehicle ordinance? They say, no. But do you want these people living outside on their cars, in their cars for nights at a time? Well, they said, no, we don't want four cars parked out in front of it. So Larry Klein was in the minority tonight. But it was Greg Sharp who asked a lot of questions to the city attorney about where the other cities, many of them that were modeled for the vehicle habitation, are they going to repeal theirs? And the city attorney said, there's no evidence that they are. It was one point where what has come up was the Santa Barbara Plan in which vehicles are are used at other locations where people can spend the night and then they they shoo them out in the morning at a specific designation. And this was something that Liz Niss had brought up. Liz Niss, of course, former Santa Clara County supervisors, had had a lot of these kind of issues in Santa Clara. And so that's where we are tonight. And we will not be here next week. We are off. It's Thanksgiving week, but we're back on December 1st and then December 8th and then December 15th before we get to the holiday break for Christmas and New Year's. But also tonight, we heard about the lease between Palo Alto Unit Coverly, it's a big Coverly night, the lease between Palo Alto Unified School District and the City Coverly Community Center. We heard from a member of the cardiac program, who'd been there since 2002. You know, there was a lot of great programs that when Foothill, they decided to move Foothill out, there's a lot of ramifications, some great programs that were serving the community. And also Liz Niss brought up the tax base of when Foothill was there, but that's being turned over to the school district. So Palo Alto loses out a lot in that in that area. But a win tonight was for, we heard from someone who takes ballroom dancing, and we also heard from a gentleman who was part of that Foothill cardiovascular program that is just so vital for so many of these people, for seniors especially, who need that exercise so they can have continued health. The grocery store tenant, college terrace center, based on the proposed grocery tenant that would likely be comparable to quality product and services similar to the famed JGNF market as it existed and operated on December 7, 2009, at 218 El Camino, that has been moved and that has been moved to December 1st. That really opens up our action items tonight. We're going to have the review of the City Hall remodel project. That continues from November 10, 2014, kind of jumps around a lot. Then we have the policy discussion on whether the conduct to conduct a closed session prior to an open session to discuss the 2014-2015 management and professional compensation plan. Possible refer to the referral to the policy and services regarding the closed open session practice for compensation matters. Also, earlier tonight, in a study session, the council had an update on the Santa Clara County Valley Transportation Authority, that's otherwise known fondly as VTA, that's the bus line, El Camino Bus Rapid Transit Project. Then we had oral communications and also Jim Keane gave us a report on the Beatles and that big event that took place with the opening of the Mitchell Park Library Come Together and the success that that was. Also, Corey Walbach has been declared the winner of that very, very close council race. It was the last race. It went on for more than a week. 14,000 perennial ballots were released Sunday night, but it was Corey Walbach over Lydia Koo.
City council meeting. Can colleagues please come back to DIAS? And I'm going to invite our guests to go out to the lobby for any conversations. We're going to be taking up the the item number 13, which is the review of the City Hall remodel project. And so the city manager is here to report on the council-approved capital improvement project for the lobby and second floor of City Hall as requested by council members Burt Holman and Schmid at the end of one of the meetings. I'm sorry, I can't. Jim, are you ready to go?
I'm sorry, are we on number 12 as far as public comment or are we on number 13?
We had a public comment speaker for item number 12 who left. And now we have another one for item, oh, this is for item number 13. So we're going to do your staff presentation, then we'll go out to the public, and then we'll come back to council.
Okay, great. So thank you, Cash, if you would sort of help with the with the PowerPoint. So first of all, before we before we get going, put this in context, this item was acted on unanimously by the council on June 16th as part of your consent calendar. Almost two months later, on August 4th, council members asked to schedule this as an action item. And at that time, I did point out that we were, I wasn't exactly certain what the action would be because we were already well into the contract, I mean, the award of the contract and the work that was going on. But we have, it's been agendized a number of times for action. And so we don't have a specific recommendation as the staff on this, other than, of course, my view, I guess, would be staying the course that we're on, we're almost done. But it certainly seems along the way that there was a desire for, you know, just sort of more public discussion and review of the item. I would say, just as an aside, that I think we should not be, in general, not in relation to this item, so hard on the consent calendar. Consent items are publicly noticed, they have written reports, and obviously, there always is the opportunity for the council to pull them. But even when they're not pulled, the the idea is is that the information is there and it's available. And the consent calendar is, you know, completely in line with the requirements of the Brown Act and that sort of thing. And it's really a way of managing the workload of the council. So in any case, City Hall remodel. We did want to add to the staff report that you had and put this in perspective. First of all, I think this is a good project. I actually think it's a great project and it's long overdue. We went back and we looked at some sort of research that other organizations use about the need to be continually investing in facilities. The city of Portland, for example, has a policy of looking up to almost a 3% annual contribution towards capital facilities for either operations or capital reinvestment or in a building that was, what, dedicated in 1970s? So that makes it, what, 45 years old? There has been some investment that has been made in this building over the years. Interestingly enough, even in the even in my time here, we spent almost $6 million in this building on the HVAC system, much more than these improvements. And while that sort of was essential to kind of keeping the building running, I could make the case that really providing adequate public space is something that actually has more value for the public in a lot of ways than those behind-the-scenes investments that we've had to make. That it supplements the council infrastructure strategy. In other words, the council has successfully, building on the heels of the the infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission, which Brad was one of the staff people on, and the policy that you adopted. Those are not the only initiatives that you've been operating, working on as a council-related infrastructure. You've put more funding into our street maintenance program and things like that, increasing those, that sort of thing. And the idea of a project that allows for us to really improve the effectiveness of City Hall is one, in my view, that ought to be looked at in conjunction with your infrastructure This this project has changed and the funding grew, but it was built into the CIP over a number of years. The project was vetted through the council on numerous occasions. And I just don't think we should lose sight of the fact. I mean, it's very easy to sort of question, why should you invest in a city hall? But design does matter, that this first floor is really dead space, it's unwelcoming, it's inefficient, and it's ineffective for the public and for the staff who support the council and the public. So the project includes space, and that sort of sounds like NASA or something, I didn't mean it that way, space and technology for 21st century public participation with technology and communication systems for broadcast and connectivity, information, education, and effective participation in decision-making, and we'll touch on those. It has several varied new public meeting spaces, a large community meeting room, and I don't know if you've got the size of some of these spaces. The lobby itself, which can, given the design of this new community meeting room, where the council can have really effective public meetings outside of the council chambers, the lobby itself can be can be opened up to the lobby so to be an extended, larger space for the public. A new council conference room where the old HR conference room is, that's also enlarged. And the old council conference room, the one that you all know, is freezing for the where the council members sit under the under the vents and everything is turned into a training and multipurpose room for the organization and other uses. There are also ancillary benefits to this project. I mean, and looking at the work, there were code issues that, you know, required us to provide more sprinklers and alarms, to build in accessible water fountains on the different floors and restrooms, accessible restrooms as part of this project. We also have moved all of the customer service functions down to the first floor. So we've relocated the, as part of this project, utilities, customer service, and bill pay that was up on whatever it was, the second floor, the mezzanine, and we'd have public folks who often trying to figure out how to get up there and lost. Everything will be on the first floor. And as a consequence of doing that, we had to make staffing shifts, both for HR and for the information technology staff that allowed us to consolidate the HR functions that were divided into different space. So we've got more effective collaborative staff space for those people. And for IT, which allows us to put all of them on one floor and actually bring eight to 10 offsite offsite staff from East Bay Shore to City Hall. So there are sort of back backstage productivity improvements there also. This this project that was approved does have a significant public art component, and we'll touch on that briefly. It allows us to sort of enhance community participation and information. It includes rejuvenating the elevators. It's not a lot of money that's going into that, but it's been one of my little pet peeves that we have thousands of visitors to City Hall every day, most of whom aren't coming even here, and they're riding the elevators up from the garage to find their way out to the to the the street. Probably all of you have dealt with citizens or visitors who are standing there blankly when the wall, when the doors open up and they're trying to figure out how the heck they get out to the street. They're staring at the wall. And certainly, the ability to, you know, present the city itself as a better steward of its buildings is worthwhile. There is a component here that upgrades the signage and wayfinding in a unified, clear way with a new standard. We'll show you some examples of that. And then lastly, again, a reminder that this is the public's building and center of government and should be welcoming and understandable place for people to access their government and know where to go. You know, folks who regularly come here might have a, you know, might be easier to do this, but obviously, the building ought to be encouraging everybody to come here. So there's an art project component here that is in the in the lobby itself. And we have a contract award on, I think, the next council agenda related to this project. And it's an interactive digital piece. Elise is here if we need to answer some more questions. You look at the next slide, of course. And what it will do is it's an interesting item that will mine different sources and allow interactivity both between news, issues, conversation with these little pop-ups. And Elise could certainly explain it more to you all. But it does serves double duty also from our being able in the lobby, also in overflow situations or other to be able to broadcast the council meeting also out there in overflow, but also the ability for us to build in communication and community narratives right in City Hall where people now, for the most part, been wondering, one, how to find out something about the city, or, two, having to stand in line to pay for a parking permit or something like that. My hope has been that this will allow us to focus our content development, particularly as it relates to graphic and visual information and videos, to deploy all sorts of things when people come into City Hall, whether it's youth videos, whether it's meeting people in the city, sorts of interviews, whether it's neighborhood videos that could be developed that, you know, even crowdsourced in the community where everybody, anybody comes in and they can say, oh, here's the evergreen neighborhood, and you start to see things. And City Hall becomes a place of coming together. There's a wayfinding component that has gone through the ARB to the point where they've, I think they've talked about, could, would this be part of a standard that we would look at more often in other buildings? And again, you've got, again, some updating to City Hall and the police and trying to connect our buildings more with signage themselves. A series of, again, contemporary signs identifying where parking is at this particular site. The next one is a core steel The next one is of course dealing with the internal signage, which is most of what looks like it does date back to 1970 with even bad information and data on it, on the things that the city doesn't even provide or do anymore. Obviously, you don't need a, a project to change that, but it's designed to sort of show, I think, the, the positive scale that this project provides. And of course, all of these things evolved, but over this period of time, going back to 2011, in, in committee meetings or in the CIP adoption or other discussions by the council, they were there. So the, some of the, what the real issue has to deal with, partly, I think, is a reaction to the cost. The fiscal year 14 budget had a CIP of $2.7 million anticipated for this project. The sort of first stories written about this, because of the way the staff report was written, showed the project growing from 2.7 million to 4.5. This was when we brought the item to the council in June for the contract award for the construction project and for the budget ordinance amendment, because of the change in the pricing. In truth, actually, 4.5 wasn't the right way to reflect it because it included almost $250,000 that was going to be returned to the infrastructure reserve. So the real comparison was 2.7 million to 4.3 million, which is roughly 1.6 million. So some of the stories that have said, oh, there's been a 1.6 million dollar increase. So as we look at this increase, one of the factors was, is that the project before the CIP had always anticipated that all of the furnishings and furniture components of $300,000 would be handled outside of the CIP project and billed to departments and that sort of a thing. And when, when I explained how we funded this, we looked at it and said it would make more sense to put all of the project costs in this project. And so we put the $300,000 into the project itself rather than sort of leaving it as an additional cost that would be out there. So my view is, the apples to apples is, why does this go from 3 million to 4.3 million? Then the next point was that the CIP that was adopted in 2014, which was essentially in June of 2013, was an out-of-date estimate for the project by the time we went out to bid. So when we went out to bid in April of 2014, our pre-bid engineering estimate had updated our estimate of the cost to 3.8 million dollars for the different components. Now, some of that has to do with some scope definition changes, but also attempts to get a closer estimate to what we thought it was in the market. So in many ways, the concern, one of the concerns I thought that I heard was, wow, we, we awarded this contract with one bidder, and that bid was essentially what this difference is between the 3.8 million and the 4.3 million, for the most part, 500 or so thousand dollars more. So one of the questions would get to be, well, was, did that bid make sense? And when, when the staff had got the bids back, we looked at this closely because the construction bid was about a little, more than 20% above our estimate. We've actually had a number of bids all over the place that are running significantly above our estimates, some of which in utilities have run even 100% more than our estimate. So we really had to go back and figure out how to value engineer a project. But we concluded that it was a responsive and responsible bid, that we're in an environment of rapidly escalating costs, that a delay in moving forward and going back out and everything had as much chance of increasing the cost in the marketplace, just given the fact that this is a relatively small construction bid. The actual amount for the direct construction costs, part of the contract was 1.8 million dollars. So it was in that area that it had increased from 1.3 to 1.8 million dollars from our engineers' estimate. That it's a small project for a contractor, and it's in a difficult and challenging building. It's in a public building in a city hall on the first floor with all sorts of traffic, all sorts of conditions about when you can work and when you can't work, being able to, you know, intervene and have folks sort of reschedule what their work was. That we have time constraints about the hours when folks can work. That this project, as it relates to prevailing wage, essentially, the respondent we had was a prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage contractor.
A contractor, and our original estimate had estimated this as a non-pervailing wage, so there's a slight increase. We have a bond requirement, which for small firms makes it very difficult for them to apply for a project sort of, of this scale. And the staff, when we, when we saw this, I had these same questions. The staff went out and did some pretty extensive reference checks and interviews with clients who had worked with the firm and who we awarded this to. And we concluded that, that the project as proposed was a good and necessary project, that trying to punt and go back out and come back four months later was, for many reasons, a very risky thing to do, and we had a contractor who had a great, has a really good performance record. But so then we looked at how we would fund the difference, or should we value engineer it and cut some components out of the project? And the recommendation we brought to the council was to proceed with the award of the contract and keep the project the same, and partly because of two things that were in the budget amendment ordinance. One was that as we started looking at this project, really, we recognized that the, the decisions to really focus on the first floor had these impacts on other departments. And when we actually looked at the, the benefits that would accrue to the various utilities in the, in the IT tech fund, we actually said, well, there's a chargeback we should charge to those funds for this project rather than just funding it completely straight out of the general fund. So there was a $668,000 chargeback to utilities and a $499,000 chargeback to the tech fund that this finance staff had calculated. And then we looked to the Community Center Development Impact Fee Fund for a remaining $686,000 to fund the gap. We had $5.4 million in that impact fee fund, and the staff tells me, even after this draw that we have right now, just due to some of our, either additions or interest earnings, we have about $5 million left in that account. So for all of those reasons, we brought the item to the council on June 16th and put it, put the recommendation in the hands of the council. And, you know, we got the vote of the council at that time, and we proceeded doing the work. So we're here to answer any questions. Is there anything you want to add to that, Brad, right now?
No, I think that's the story.
I will tell you that, that, you know, I, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that not only is this going to be very good and effective space, we need it. The council really doesn't have a good place to meet other than sitting here in the dais. And when we have committee meetings now, and more and more of them, even scrambling to have effective meetings, it's absurd that you sit in the existing council conference room and invite a committee in, and you're doubled up and you're sitting there in space that not only doesn't work for the conversation for you all, but it doesn't work for any of the public who, who is, who is there. And I think that there are, there will be opportunities for how the council and the public do business in more varied space that will work better for you and everyone. Now, all of the, the community rooms, the large community meeting room will have, you know, technology that has both broadcast capability, will be high-definition broadcast capability ultimately, when you can, when we can get that connected through the analog sort of stuff that we have here, but it's, it's wired for that. There'll be, you know, microphones, and there'll be digital displays and the ability to use digital equipment for presentations from the public or the staff or the council in that, in that meeting room. And it can be configured for both the council sitting in a sort of dais sort of format versus a large table and being able to sit around it and handle a number of folks. Brad might be able to speak to that. Same thing with the HR conference room, not nearly as big, but the table will still at least accommodate 16 people. That one also has both video screen capability, video teleconferencing capability, and it's at least wired for the potential for doing broadcast. That room's often used for not as many public meetings, so we didn't put that in that. Same capacity is there in the, in the other conference room and the training room, both as far as the video technology and the sort of ability to do online training or webinars and that sort of thing. But it is also wired for ultimate ability to add cameras for broadcast capability through the media center, if that's what we, we want to do. So I think that's sort of enough of a presentation and more for Q and A.
Okay. Before I go out to public comment, I just wanted to reiterate our consent calendar item decisions, and it is usually something that we've approved in the budget, but you still need to get approval by council of over $85,000 contracts. Is that correct? All contracts over $85,000 or more?
Yes.
Is that it? And then if it comes out of committee unanimously, it typically goes on consent unless committee asks for it to be heard? Is that basically kind of our rule?
Well, yeah, but, you know, I mean, again, I mean, the council always has full flexibility to remove items.
And then we can remove it, but with three members of council can remove.
There was a, the council removed an item from that night's consent calendar. We had a $180,000 contract on the Embarcadero Road that I think Councilmember Scharf moved to remove and was seconded, and the council pulled that one off the agenda.
Right. So, yeah. So, and then we take up the item with that same staff report. It's not a new staff report that comes out later. So I just wanted to clarify that because I think that there has been, I know a lot that I've heard, that this was hidden and people don't talk about it and stuff like that. So I just wanted to iterate how we handle the consent calendar. City Attorney Molly, you'd like to say something as well?
Just like to add, there are a couple of other categories of items that are placed on the consent agenda. There are other types of resolutions and even sometimes ordinances that are appropriate for placement on the consent agenda. And the council's policies and protocols have, have a list.
Right.
Also, one final item to note about the consent calendar is that members of the public always have an opportunity to speak for three minutes on any item on the consent calendar.
Right. There's no, there's no barrier to people participating, even if it's on consent. Okay, I have three speakers on this right now, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Wayne Douglas, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
I'm back. I, I wanted to hear all this way back when, before it was delayed a few times, and then, was it last week where the city manager went into a snit about costing $1,000 every time you delay one of these things? Kind of became really curious. It's about as boring as I thought it would be in the first place. Thank you, Jim, for that. But you did answer a question that I would have asked anyway, and, and so I'm very happy with having a chance to review it. I hope the council members are just as happy to get a second look at this item. Thank you.
Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Herb Borak.
Good evening, council members. This discussion reminds me of one of those marriages where six months are spent preparing for the wedding, the flowers, the band, the guest list, the dinner, the drinks. And not even six hours are spent preparing for two human beings living a life together and raising a family and earning the money to do it. It seems so trivial in, in, in the view of the problems that are facing this society and this city council. Was it, was it Liz that spoke of growing up with a New England town meeting, which is the epitome of, of democratic representation? Does any one of you think that the decisions you make will be better decisions if you look out at a very well-carpeted floor and a very well-opposed chair? I don't think so. I don't think so. I, I was, I was really dismayed. I knew that, that there was something in the offing, because I could see that that old carp, that old carpet was pretty clean, all right, but it needed stretching. And I thought, they're putting that off because they're planning to do some redecorating. And I was sad because I wasn't, I didn't know how to come to you and say, put the damp homeless people in the back of the city council chamber. At least they'll be safe and out of the rain. It's next to the police station. I should have just done that because it wouldn't have done any, any good, but at least, at least I would have put it to you that it could be done. That woman back there who spoke, she didn't tell you that she had a home up until a year ago, when the city of Mountain View upgraded the old Navy barracks where these people were living in, perfect? They paid money for rent from a landlord who then sold so that they could make millions upgrading and having more valuable property. I knew that because I happened to be, we owned property in, in, in Mountain View, and I happened to be there when I, when she was speaking, and the babies and the... The, the problems that you have to meet are not in the decoration of this building. It's an okay building. It looks nice. Many people would be glad to have as much as you're planning to spend on the whole town. Please. Use your head.
That was quick. The city manager has reviewed the, the history of the project and what, what its components are. You have a summary of the line item expenditures on packet page 697.
Could you speak into the?
Yeah, you have a, a summary of line items of the project expenditures on packet page 697. And I think there's a more interesting question, now that this item has been continued from time to time, and that is, out of the construction contract of about $2.7 million and plus a 10% contingency that was approved in June, how much of that had been spent when this item came before you on August 4th? And what was the cumulative expenditures out of that construction contract on October 20th? Because it was continued, the item was continued from August 4th to August 20th. And then all the cumulative expenditures out of the construction contract as of last week, November 10th? And what are they now? That is, as you've been continuing this item under the guise of transparency, money has been continued to be spent. So if the city manager doesn't have those dollar amounts by date with him now, you can request them. So you can learn what happens when you have concerns about the cost of a project and you keep on continuing the agenda item about it while project expenditures continue to be made. And I thought that would be a helpful learning experience for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Price, we're bringing this back for, you have no recommendation, is that correct, Jim? We're bringing this back for, you have no recommendation, is that correct, Jim?
That, that is correct.
All right. Councilmember Price.
Yes, I just have one question. On one of the slides, you identified various points, including prevailing wage. Now, when I look at the contract on page seventeen, it says that this project is not required to have prevailing wage because it's 100% city-funded, and is that correct?
That is correct. We're, we're not required to pay prevailing wage on the project, and in fact, the engineer's estimate for the construction costs assumed a non-pervailing wage contractor, but DL Falk, the contractor doing the work generally is a prevailing wage contractor and pays prevailing wage.
Okay. I will take this moment to point out, I am in favor of prevailing wage, and I'm disappointed we have a resolution which says we exempt ourselves from it. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
I want to start with a procedural question because I don't see how this got on our agenda. We have a procedure for getting items on the agenda for council colleague memos, and as far as I can tell, the manager may have gotten one or two phone calls and decided on his own to put something on, but doesn't have any action requested. So I'm concerned that this is not a precedent for a constant revisiting of issues. And so I'd, I'd like you to tell me how it's on the agenda and what's the purpose.
So, you know, I could appreciate the policy implications concern, but at the August 4th meeting, and I think it probably was under council member comments, at the end of the meeting, I think Councilmember Holman asked that this would be moved, and then maybe Councilmember Burt seconded. I also thought Councilmember Schmidt was involved in that. And I did say at that time, I said, well, we'll bring it back as an informational or something like that, and there was no, like an action item. And I did say, what? I did say, I didn't know what the action would be since we're already underway with the project. I mean, we've got somebody under contract, they're doing work, they've torn out stuff which is really not in position for us to really stop that. That would have been the worst thing. But I did ask the city attorney even, does that, does, does that pass muster for putting this on the agenda? And you said, it does. So that's, I'm, I'm not blaming Molly for this, I'm just saying this is the process, thought process.
You're essentially receiving a report. That's an action of sorts.
Let me follow up on Mr. Borack's comments. How much of these, how many of these contracts have already been let?
Did you want to speak to it? Yeah. So, I mean, I think all of the contracts that we had out, for the most part, were out. There are two contracts, for the most part, we have not let yet. And this Narduli, the artist contract for $174,000 for the public art project.
Can you speak into your mic?
I'm sorry. Yeah, Narduli artist contract for the $174,000, which we have been moving off of the council agenda concurrent with this item. And the wayfinding contract itself, as far as the implementation, right, which is about a $307,000 project. So there's been, you know, there's $500,000 that we have not let.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to move anything because I think that we followed all our procedures. And I don't know about other council members, but I read your memo back in, in June, and I assume everybody else read the memo, and the vote on this was, in effect, nine zero. And if people didn't do their homework, well, let's sort of shame on them. But I would go further and say that, like any big building, you need to spend money on it on a regular basis, and the city hasn't. So I'm going to go off into some detail, because I think I was the only one around here when this building opened in 1970. Liz may have been, but you, I joined the planning commission in 1970, and I've served the city with four different city managers, every one of whom has felt this building was inadequate from day one. To be frank, the building was built on the cheap, and I'll give you two brief examples. One, the building had three elevator shafts, as it does today, but for the first 15 years or so that it was in operation, we only had two elevators. We had a empty shaft to the third elevator. The result of that was, you would find employees stacked up waiting for the elevators. We needed three elevators. We finally found the money. The reason that the council, back in 1968 or 69, didn't authorize the third elevator was they ran out of money. There was no program, as you know, architects always have programs. No one department of the city fits on one floor of the city, of City Hall, and never has. And we've all heard of the deficiencies in the police department building from day one. The most insulting one that I learned years later was from one of the junior architects on this, that this building is just a scale model down of the General Motors Building, or what was in the, I don't know what it's called now, but the General Motors Building in Manhattan. So if you're, next time you're in Manhattan, find where the General Motors Building is, 60s or 70s, somewhere around there, and then, I can't remember the main street, but you'll see a remarkable similarity. It's this building's big brother. So we've needed work, and over the years, we've done lots of work, way more than the 2.7 million, and it's all been on the consent calendar. I don't recall who, under whose administration, whether it was Frank Bennetts or Jim Keens, but we had a series of major programs with regard to the HVAC system and other, other programs to really fix the infrastructure of this building, way more than the 2.7 million. Again, approved unanimously and on the consent calendar. We have items on the consent calendar tonight, the total about 1.3 million, which is light. Week in and week out, we have consent calendar items that we, that add up to more than 2.7 million dollars. There's nothing hidden about this. We have members of the public come down and talk to us all the time about consent calendar items. I think we had a couple tonight. We have council members who know very well how to pull some item off the consent calendar, and they did on, as Jim has pointed out, on the night of whatever that meeting was in June. So let's get real. Anytime the Palo Alto Weekly runs a story, we're supposed to bow and immediately take it up? I don't think that's good public policy, particularly when this was done all in accordance with our procedures, consistent with maintaining a building. We're stuck with this building. I can't imagine us building a new building, not in the foreseeable futures. So I think that our job, and any future city council's job, is to make it a usable building, and not spending money on it is not a way to do it, unless you want to have the City Hall equivalent of, of Coverley in, in a few years. So I, I hope we can put an end to this discussion because I think it's going nowhere, and I think it's really an exercise in bad procedures.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, as one of the council members who requested to come back, I thought it was useful and valuable, and you did a good job on selling it. I have no problem with supporting it, as I did with the consent calendar item. But $4 million on consent, you know, raises questions. Aggregated over time, it grew slowly in pieces, but it is a significant amount of spending, and it is important that the public have a chance to hear. Number two, I guess it's important to make the point, it's not just an aggregation of a few consent calendar items over time, but it's the needs that have grown over 45 years, and it's to last us for the next 40. So it's really an investment in our future, and that point is important to make. Three, I think the selling to the public, in your presentation, Jim, you mentioned a number of times, is the public's building, public spaces. They're coming to meetings, they want to know what's going on, wayfinding. It's, it's their building. And pushing something on consent doesn't necessarily alert the public to what's going on to their space, their buildings, what it might mean for them. So a presentation like we had tonight is effective for the public to hear and for us to go out and talk to the public about. And finally, you know, you're talking to a group who spends maybe too much time at City Hall. So together on consent, we can say, oh, yeah, this building needs it. But it's sometimes good to do that in public so a couple people can get up and say, wait a minute, here are four other things you could do with $4 million, just to keep real. So fine with what you're doing, thanks for coming back and doing it, but I think $4 million project, especially on the public's property, is a good item for the full council agenda.
Councilmember Burt.
Yeah, first one follow-up question. Jim, you mentioned that we're going to be able to consolidate, I think it was eight IT workers that are down, and I think it sounds like there are two potential gains from that. One is inefficiency from having those workers in a single location. Are we also being able to abandon that space as a result?
So we, councilmember, we, we definitely have the first goal. The second one right now is, I don't know the term of the least, but there's utility staff right now who would be sort of backfilling that space. Whether or not we can ultimately kind of get that second saving, I don't have the answer yet on the red.
Okay. And I'll say that I, I also think that your explanation tonight was informative and useful. I, I disagree that the characterization that this is principally maintenance, this is maintenance and upgrades. And from what I could tell from looking at it, I think it's primarily upgrades and secondarily maintenance. And these upgrades have, you've explained good justifications for them. I think one of the things that we owe the public is that, not merely that we can justify projects in and of themselves, but what's the priority in relation to other community needs, which may not be getting the expenditures, and which may have equal or better justifications for them. And so I think it's, it's a responsible exercise for this to be done publicly, and I think that a space like this, that is a community space, there is a greater accountability to the public that we owe them when we do a project like this. And so I think tonight's presentation was worthwhile. Thanks.
Well, I'm not hearing any action on this. I know that this didn't write, well, that's what I'm saying, I'm not hearing any action. I know Councilmember Holman, and she's not here tonight, but she did make a comment when we were moving this off of the agenda to another agenda one evening, that she did have some ideas for action, but I don't see anything coming from this council tonight. I'm sorry that the Palo Alto Weekly had to do the article on it because I personally found it to be, you know, a non, I mean, it's, it is a big expense, but we've been following this expense for years, and it's been time for, to do the lobby remodel. And so it didn't come as a surprise to me. I think the concern is, of course, the fact that we're back in full, full employment of all of the contractors right now because the financial crisis is over and the lending institutions are open for commercial real estate, which were shut down for a good three years or more during the financial crisis when commercial lending was almost hardly existent. And so there's a lot going on right now, and a lot of contractors also fell out of business during the financial crisis. This one took a lot of big ones out that normally were able to survive financial crises in real estate. So, and yet we captured some of the, the contracts that came in under budget substantially during that period of time because we were able to go out to bid on public works projects. So there was a period of time that I know that we were routinely getting contracts under bid. So I'm, I wish that we could have had more contractors on this, I think we all do, but we also have to move forward with keeping the city running and, and keeping the operations smooth. So, oh, I see one more person that wants to talk about this. I, I did find this to be a political volleyball during the campaign, which was hard to explain because it does sound like it's an awful lot of money. And yet we do, I know, because I sit through all the meetings for five years, we look at a lot of things, we spend a lot of money, and we are working hard to try to bridge the gaps between the various different issues that are going on, as we already took up this evening with some of the homeless topics that we had. So, and Councilmember Scharf wants to speak to this as well. So you want to, go ahead.
So I actually did just want to comment, I was thinking about that, that we actually got to this item at a really reasonable hour, that there is three people in the chambers. But I must say, when I ran for council, I thought there was going to be pitchforks, you know, angry mobs, you know, out there yelling and screaming about this. And maybe I missed it, but I don't recall for tonight's meeting, getting a single email on this from anyone.
No, we had one about the position, we had, it's in the, it's at the end of the staff report here, but it was just about the position of when we took it up earlier in the evening by Tom DeBois. He wanted us to take it up early in the evening.
Oh, it was by Tom? And that was to the whole council, right? That was that, that was the email? Okay, I got it. So I don't remember a single citizen besides Tom's email, which was about process. And I think that's, that's something that we should at least think about. It's, it's interesting. I think it was a shame that this project, which is a good project, and I think we do need to invest in City Hall, really got, seemed to get caught up in, in a campaign. I think that's really what seemed to happen here more than anything else. I also think there are other issues that are going to come back on City Hall. I think this is not the first time we're going to have to invest in City Hall. There's a bunch of other issues. As Councilmember Klein, and I'm really glad you went through that, because I wouldn't have known that history, and I always thought this building was built on the cheap when I walk around. But it's good to know that. But if I recall, there's a big item that needs to be done. Isn't there the Plaza? Isn't that, isn't that a weak Plaza? Can you just explain that? Because that's like a $10 million or dollar item or more.
The Civic Center Plaza deck out in front of the building has been identified as needing to have the waterproofing beneath it done. And so Councilmember Scharf, you're recalling that on the infrastructure committee, we, we had discussions on this item. We've kind of temporarily moved it off the list of pressing items because we're going to do a, a new study of it and hopefully get some better estimates. But yes, the cost estimate that we've been looking at in the past was $16 million for that project.
Right. Jim, anyway, I wanted to thank you for bringing it forward.
Great. So if I could just add three just clarifying comments. I, I agree, this is more about improvement to the space, and I think it's partly some remediation of inherited bad design. We're having conversations in the community about the importance of design, and it's not just external design. It's the functionality of, of internal space is also important. And of course, you know, we, we can just look around the valley and see how much attention people are putting to that sort of thing. Secondly, I think it's important to realize that, you know, we, we had really been through a lot on, up to the $2.7 million project definition. So what, what we had had been through a lot of different public discussions. It was this question of the cost increase, and I think it's important that the remedy that we identified with the chargeback to the tech fund and some of the utilities funds and to the impact fee fund are not wide openly fungible. So it's not like we could reprogram those funds for other use easily. So saying, well, why don't we put it here or there? I mean, obviously, quit a substitute to some of the general fund money and cut the whole thing back, but again, they were sort of constrained revenues that we found. And then lastly, just, you know, I will come back to the council with the contract award for the artist and the wayfinding piece, but those are embedded within the presentation that we've given you, and then we'll have a, an explanation on each of those items. And we very well might put those two, each one of those on consent. And we very well might put those two, each one of those on consent. I'm just saying that right now, it has as much to do with what your workload is, but, you know, we rely on the council's direction, and you know, if you want to pull something off, we're always there to talk it through with you. So, thank you.
All right, Larry can't help himself, one more item.
Well, it may help you all, maybe not. One more item of history, all the problems that Jim talks about transparency on the first floor, public access and all that, it's no accident that they're a problem. This building was designed in 1967, '68. Vietnam War demonstrations were really heating up, and we'd had famous, right, we'd already had one major demonstration on what's now Litten Plaza, so on. We'd had one council member who'd had some type of little bomb placed on his doorstep. And so this was designed not to be a welcoming building to the public. No accident at all.
That explains a lot, too, no? Okay, let's move on to, since there is no action on item number 13, to item number 14, which is a discussion on the consideration of conducting an open or closed negotiation session for the 2014-2015 Management and Professional Compensation Plan. I'll turn this item over directly to staff for their recommendation and their return to council for questions, comments, and action after public comment.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, unless Kathy has more to add to the summary that I'm going to give to you. Some background, the Management and Professional Compensation Plan is basically the pay plan that exists for the roughly 200 management and professional staff who we have excluding the four CAOs. The, they are without an approved plan for the current fiscal year we're in. You might recall even a year or so ago, we had some recommendations in the budget for them. The council was, did not like the recommendation that I had made because of the, at least partly because of the influence or impact it could have on the subsequent SEIU negotiations we were going to have, and you asked us to sort of back off of those. We subsequently went through and agreed to a, essentially a two-year contract with SEIU. And as is typical, then, this management professional group is still trailing on having, in a sense, their agreement acted on. So we have a series of items, this discussion, and then pending your decision on this discussion, bringing it back to the council actually for action on the Management and Professional Comp Plan. This item does not do this. This item simply references, deals with the question of, do you want to conduct your, hold your initial discussion and decisions about the Management Professional Comp Plan in open session or in closed session as you always have? And this issue was raised by council, and that's why we are bringing it back. Our recommendation is that we, for now, continue the current practice of doing this in closed session and refer it, though, to the policy, the larger question, the Policy and Services Committee, the discussion of all the alternatives related to this group and the other bargaining groups. I, after the council direction, I met with representatives of the Management Professional Group, and at a minimum, they expressed the fact that at this late stage, as they've been waiting for them to be selected out without some clarity and discussion about how other groups would be similarly handled, I think clearly they saw that as a negative impact, and at a minimum, we're asking for staying the course for right now and then having the larger policy discussion, and then we can let that, let you set the direction going forward. So our recommendation would be to continue for this year, the Management Professional Plan in a closed session. We would come back at your next council meeting with that closed session. And then following that, the following meeting, the direction that you would provide to us would be put on the council open agenda for action. In the meantime, following your closed session, we would meet with the Management Professional Representatives to advise them of what the council potential action would be at your open meeting, and would like to do that before the end of the year. Cover everything up. So that's...
Oh, I have three speakers on this. So let's hear from the speakers and then bring it back to council for questions, comments, and action. So our first speaker is Herb Borak. You will have three minutes, to be followed by Robert Moss and then Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd. I have three suggestions for changes in policy that permanently would be in ordinance. Although you, for the current situation, you may want to do it right away. And I also have one request for information. And the first suggestion is that the city manager's initial recommendation for, to the council on compensation for a, one of the employee groups should be made public and included in your agenda packet with the first time you've got a closed session agenda item on that subject. That would enable the public to speak to the particular recommendation when they have an opportunity to speak to you before you go into closed session. Absent a specific recommendation, people would just be talking about all sorts of things if they spoke at all. However, the council's deliberations and subsequent recommendations from the manager, those would continue to be in closed session. The second thing is to do what the city of San Jose has in their code, and that is, as offers and counteroffers are exchanged between the city and its employee groups, they be made public. Because both sides in the negotiation know what they are, and so there's no reason to hide anything, but it would be informative to the public to see the status of the negotiations as they go along. The third thing is that it should be the council policy, that if bargaining unit agrees that the negotiations occur in public. You can't on your own have a decision made to negotiate in public because both sides have to agree to negotiate in public. One example I have is a former city attorney who was hired, a city of Boulder, city attorney, and his negotiation on his salary package and contract was done in public. Finally, the request for information is on the Management Compensation Committee, you know, as to when was it first formed and generally, you know, what is its composition? Not necessarily the particular people right now, but how is it composed and under what authority? You know, was it set up? You know, for example, maybe it was first set up when the Management Professional Group was trying to form a union and the previous city manager thought it was important to have such a committee. Or maybe it's always existed, or maybe it's in the merit rules and regulations. But I believe it would be helpful, rather than just have a name of a committee in some staff report without knowing what it is, and an explanation, I believe, would be helpful. Thank you.
Robert Moss, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd and councilmembers. Well, there's a fundamental problem with the public not getting involved in city finances. I just, I don't think they understand, city governments are basically providing services, so most of the funding goes to pay and benefits. And that money comes from the public, from our taxes and fees and so on. And so the public ought to be informed about what we're spending our money on. Therefore, I think when we are talking about pay and benefits, the first thing we should be doing is making a public presentation, giving the range of salaries for different categories of workers. This is what we're paying. If possible, compare that with the private industry, and if you want to also compare it with other cities, okay. But give people in the community an idea of what the pay levels are and what you're considering. If you have any idea what you're considering, pay levels will be in the future, okay? Then you go into a closed session and talk about the details and how you're going to negotiate with the various groups of employees and what you will give them and take back and whatever. When you have that agreement, then you come out in public and you identify where the money's going to be spent, and you'll be able to justify to the community what you're doing and why you're doing it. But I think it's important that you first make an effort to get the public informed and involved so you can get feedback from them. And if, as usually happens, nobody shows up, nobody from the public pays any attention and comes to the meeting and makes any comments that you're overpaying or your benefits are too high, okay, that's also a statement, you know what's going on. On the other hand, if you do get comments that the pay and benefits are excessive in general or in specific categories, that informs you when you get into your closed session and make your actual decisions. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to really change the way things happen because I don't have an awful lot of confidence in the public getting involved, but I'd like to see it tried and be as open as possible with where we're spending our money and how we're spending it, and give the public an opportunity. And then if they blow it, and I'm about 80% probability that they will, then you go back to any way you want to do it.
And our final speaker is Stephanie Munoz.
I'd like to endorse very heartily what the two preceding speakers have told you. It would be really good for people to know as the negotiations are going on what you are thinking of, rather than have them presented with a fait accompli when you have finished deciding. After all, many of the people in the town who are paying taxes make less than city servants whom they feel are perhaps not, whom they feel, whose excellent services they might very well be able to procure for less money. When Gail says that she approves a prevailing wage, as a citizen, I would like to know just what you mean by prevailing wage, because the concept sounds great. You wouldn't want to give the person as little as you possibly can. That's not a self-respecting thing to do. On the other hand, some of these people, electricians or whatever, are making a lot more than the citizens that are paying the salaries, and it's worth thinking about. I do have, in general, for the higher-paid people, I think they're getting more than they could, more than negotiations would really justify. For the lower-paid people, no, that's not true. And I have one exception to that, and it is with the health insurance. This national health insurance is very badly done. It should be on the social security so that the people of the United States get the benefit of the huge pool, and they're not paying twice for the same thing. And it's not done that way. And the cities and the counties are bearing the brunt, the states sometimes are bearing the brunt of that lack. But that should not be then shoved over onto the employees. The employees should get 100% health insurance. It isn't going to make them any richer. If they don't get, they have to get sick to get it. I don't buy that. It's within their control to cut down on the expenses by cutting down on smoking and doing more exercises and not eating fats. All those things are good, but the fact is that the first thing that the city should manage to do is make sure that the person's illness does not affect their standard of living. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, bringing this back to council for action, councilmember Price.
Yes, I would like to move the staff recommendation. I'm assuming both parts are still, as the staff report says.
I'll second that if we don't do item number two.
Pardon me?
I will second that if we do not do item number two of the staff report.
I refer to the Policy and Services Committee, the discussion of alternatives for the various labor groups and the Management Professional Group.
If it's number one, I'll second it.
That's what I second, that's what I just said, so if you want to.
And then I think number two needs to be a separate discussion.
Just to move ahead, but may I ask a question?
Well, you've made a motion to move the staff report. The staff recommends two items. So you do have a second for if you only move item number one. So are you interested in?
Okay, no, actually, I...
I can just second her motion.
All right.
Okay. I actually still want both parts because I think we have to have that conversation.
Then let's see if there's a second. So councilmember Burt is seconding the motion on both parts. I'm sorry, go ahead and speak, you want to speak?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, I, thank you for the staff recommendation. A couple of comments. I really think it's important that we proceed with the practices as outlined in point one. I think this particular item became, sort of, came to the fore, additional issues related to transparency and whatnot during the recent campaign. And since, I said this before, I'll say it again, the professional and management group is the only group that's unrepresented, and I felt that it was inappropriate to try to bring this item forward in terms of all an open session. And I know they were greatly offended by the discussion around this issue. As it relates, the second part is, I think we do need to have a thorough conversation regarding any alternatives that may be considered. School districts and cities do this very differently, and I think we have to have a much clearer understanding of the implications. I'm very concerned it has implications in terms of staff impact, workload, not only for cities, for management, but for the labor groups, for the various labor unions that we work with. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Burt, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes. So on the first part, I think it's appropriate that we not create new policy on the fly, and that's basically what was happening here. If we want to reconsider our practices, I think it should be a thoughtful and thorough discussion at Policy and Services Committee. And I would say that actually, Mr. Borak offered four different potential modifications. I don't know whether I would embrace one or four of them or none of them, but I thought that they were a useful starting point in framing some of the alternatives that we might consider at Policy and Services. So I think that it is appropriate for us to revisit how we want to conduct these negotiations going forward. After a public airing of the alternatives, we may choose to not change anything, but we might in fact elect to make some changes. So I think that's the appropriate action.
Okay, both items are on the motion, and you can speak to both items, just to clear that up. And councilmember Scharf?
Thank you. So I do think we have a strong commitment in this community transparency. And this... And this is something that would make it very transparent if we went ahead and conducted these in open session. So why do this in open session and not the labor groups? That seems to be the issue at the table. If we do the labor groups, there's a whole host of issues, and I agree, that would have to go to Policy and Services. And we'd have to think through that carefully, and I'm not sure how I would come out on it, frankly. There's a lot of back and forth. But as the city manager made my point for me, when he said, what we're doing is we're going to go into closed session, we're going to have a discussion, we're going to come out of closed session, there's no negotiation, there's no back and forth, we're going to discuss it in there, and we're going to make a decision, we're going to put it on the agenda, and then we're going to vote on it. And there's not going to be much discussion about how we got there. I suppose we could, I suppose we could rehash it, might be worth doing. So it's very different having a unionized group and having a professional and management who are not unionized. The difference is, is that there is no back and forth. And there hasn't been any back and forth in the five years that I can remember being on council. So I'm saying to myself, we can have these discussions in public, and the public can be brought along. And I really don't understand the argument that, first of all, the trailing the SEIU. You want to trail SEIU. You want to know that you are going to do better than SEIU. I mean, if you're a management professional, you're thinking to yourself, if I'm not being treated fairly, I could unionize. And so you say to yourself, we need to treat them fairly, and I believe we do. And I believe we need to bring the public along when we give raises, when we have discussions about, take this for example, the other argument that's made here that's really interesting is that the compensation decision has been put off, in contrast to SEIU, they got it first. We're going to make it retroactive. I'd bet anyone we're going to make it retroactive, because that's what we do, because that's the fair thing to do. And if you had these discussions about all of this in public, I actually believe the management professional organization would do better. I don't think they're going to do worse. I think they're going to do better, because the public will understand the service they provide to the community, the public will understand things like, when we go into closed session, the kind of things, I can't talk about what we do in closed session, so the kind of things we might look at would be salary ranges of what people are paid in other places. So you'd say, oh, other people are taking our employees, we're being outbid for them, so we need to have raises to keep up with the market. And that way, when we come up with things, the public knows where we are and understands it. And that's why I don't see any downside to the management professionals to actually do this in open session. And I see no downside to the public. I see them being brought along and understanding what we're doing. And so I think we could go ahead and do this tonight and have this discussion in public, and then discuss the various labor groups at Policy and Services, which to me is a very challenging and difficult conversation to do that right. And I think that's a very, a very difficult discussion to have and how we move forward on that. But this, I view, is completely different. So I actually, see if I have any support at all, but I would make a substitute motion that we go ahead and do the, do the management professionals' compensation plan in public and not in a closed session, and then continue number two the way it is. Okay?
Your motion fails for lack of a second. Would you like to speak to anything further?
No, I think I said what I needed to say.
All right. Vice Mayor Niss.
No, actually, Councilmember Scharf really clarified it when you made your motion. So this way, I know that we're going to go into closed session, and so that this group can be compensated hopefully this year. And then the rest can be referred. And I think, Greg, you did well on that, that's a good idea. I think having an open discussion of Policy and Services is a good idea. And we may not, we may not change anything, but we will at least have discussed it.
Councilmember Schmidt.
There's a fascinating notion of negotiating in public or making some of it public. In a way, the public already knows more details of compensation than any private sector. I mean, every year, everyone's salary is published in the newspaper. So it's not that the public doesn't know what's going on or what has gone on, but it's just over these negotiations. Now, I recall, Liz, maybe you can help, in 1990, the negotiating sessions for the Palo Alto School Board were open. Do you recall that?
I don't remember 1990, I went off in 89. I don't recall them being in public then.
Gail, they.
Sunshine when I was there.
Yeah. So there is, in the city, an example of someone for a long period of time had the negotiations in the open. Might be interesting to look at their experience and see what there is to learn from that. I guess a danger of having public negotiations is someone becomes the adversary, and it's very easy for the general public to say, oh, God, they're being unreasonable, and create a bad feeling between the workers and the people they're servicing just because it's a negotiating situation. I guess you don't want to enter into something like that. From a longer-term perspective, though, it is fascinating that in the last 10 years, the salary increases of the public employees in Palo Alto have been modest in nature compared to the general public. But the benefits, which are not quantifiable in the current budget, have been growing twice as fast. So there's a disconnect between the public gets the information about, oh, here's the impact on the budget, or here's the salary increases, but they don't get the commitment to the future that shows up in benefits and non-salary things, changes that are going on, workplace rules and so on. So, you know, base question might be, if this is done in public, would it exacerbate that situation? Or rather, might it resolve the situation so that the negotiations become more about salaries and real wages, which might be beneficial to a large portion of the workers? So there's fascinating issues here. I don't think we're in a position to make a decision, and it might be helpful to have the Policy and Services Committee spend a little time working through these examples and maybe getting the example of the P A S, a USD sunshine activities and see how they have worked.
Councilmember Berman.
So I'm going to support the motion, just want to make one mention to staff that, I know that, I think Menlo Park was having conversations about this similar item recently and maybe some other cities on the peninsula. So take a look, I know the staff report mentioned San Jose, but I think a handful of other cities have been, at least having similar discussions. Maybe, I don't know how they came out, but I think they've been having the conversation.
Okay, I'm going to support the motion also. It seems that there is no will to get item number two. It seems that that is something that people would like to take up. My concern is that I know you have a long list of things for Policy and Services to take up, and I don't see this to be a real burning issue. I was here during the last organizing of the seventh labor group. Do we have seven labor groups? Okay. That was not a good experience for the city or for the labor group. This labor group has not been challenging to organize, but I could see them wanting to organize if they need to do that in order to get a protection. So I do believe in treating them as though they were organized and with the rule that they get to use by us doing their negotiations in closed session. It always comes out at the end of the closed session into the sunshine with the agreement that we have. So there isn't, things do not stay hidden permanently. We've also made a shift of being, of reporting out the full compensation, including medical in the benefits, which is why our pay scale looks so much more higher than other cities that do not do that. But we've, I know that we've made a real effort during my term here to, to bundle that whole thing so that the workers understand really what it is that they are getting in compensation, full compensation, which is, you know, from, from private sector who often doesn't get medical care. That is, that is a big piece of the equation. So I think that we've made good progress with how we're managing to explain to the community how the expenses work, and there are many other things that the city could be taking up and spending time on. And Policy and Services, I don't know how they're going to get through the work that they have, because I know that there's a long list of things they've had to weed through in order to get it, in order to get this finished by the end of this year. It looks like you want to speak on this, yeah?
Well, I just would like to clarify, Madam Mayor, that in the body of the staff report, it says the staff does suggest this at the December 9th meeting, but if it, if we could clarify that, to leave that up to me and the committee chair as to when that would be scheduled, that would be, wouldn't want to be bound by that date. I would work with Councilmember Price on that.
I don't see a date here in the motion, so are you looking?
It's not in the motion, it's in the body of the report, though.
Okay, all right.
Just a point, you're not going to bring this forward before the end of the year, are you, Policy and Services? That seems crazy to me.
Right. So, I mean, this is one of the things to work with the chair, both given the volume of work and then the fact will be, of course, that anything you would bring forward will have to be ratified by the new council, not this council. So there's some efficiency questions.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, let's go ahead and vote. And this motion carries with Councilmember Scharf voting no and Councilmember Holman absent. Okay, the last item on our agenda is Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements, if there are any. Council, Vice Mayor Niss.
Just a quick comment. Most of you know I serve on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and we had a long meeting this morning, and among other things that we did was kick off the Winter Spare the Air campaign. So you'll probably be seeing, if you watch TV at all, you'll probably see some of the ads that come out, you may hear it on the radio. But there is a really more concerted push this year to talk about a variety of things, including outdoor barbecuing. Apparently, there's a, a real wave of barbecuing outside for a very long period of time. I'm not quite sure what you call that. I think it's a cooker. And a number of people complained about that, and were talking about actually making that illegal. As you know, wood burning on Spare the Air Day is illegal and subject to a fine. So I have a whole report on it, which I will give to the city clerk, and if anyone's interested in having copies, I will put it out there.
Councilmember Klein.
One, as you all know, I've been our city's representative on Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, BASCA, for a number of years. BASCA has unusual rules. This is an appointment by the full council, it is not an appointment by the mayor. It's an appointment for four years, and I've forgotten how long I'm in that four years, but somewhere in the middle. And actually, I could continue to serve under the rules. You don't have to be an elected official, but I don't think that's right. So I will be resigning shortly and asking the city manager and the mayor to put on the agenda for one of our December meetings, the election of a successor, so that he or she can hit the ground running. The first full board meeting will be in early January, so we want to get going on that. Two, I was very glad to hear the mayor speak about the rules, changing the rules or reconsidering the rules that I think created sort of a fiasco at the last meeting with regard to whether Vice Mayor Niss could participate. I went back and read them, and the way I read the rules, the discretion rests in the council member involved, and is not for the city council to second-guess his or her decision. And I think that's borne out by the fact that 10 of us, representing four or five different council members, have used this provision over the last few years, consistent, by the way, with state rules. The language we have about emergencies and so forth really makes no sense, because if you really said it only could apply in a family emergency, the likelihood is no one would ever be able to use it, because they wouldn't have the time to arrange for the, posting the notice on the door and all that stuff. So I think it was really unfortunate to be brought up. I think there was a, I don't know who brought it up, but I think that we went down a wrong path. It was solely up to Vice Mayor Niss and her assessment of her situation, and we should have honored that and then moved forward. Lastly, there've been a number of comments about how people whose terms are going to end on December 31st should behave. And I know there's nobody here, but maybe our two papers, our three papers are picking this up. We're all elected for terms right now that end on December 31st. Ironically, Mayor Schmidt and I, excuse me, Councilmember Schmidt and I urged that we have a change in our charter to make that earlier, roughly speaking, December 1st. And as I recall, we were voted down seven to two.
I supported it.
Did you? Okay, six to three. So those who complain might want to think about changing that again next year. But we all had a mandate. The mandate was to do the best you can over that term of office and vote your conscience. We're not supposed to be just weather vanes that say one way or another. I think that the public would want me to appoint X rather than Y. Got to be very frank, the public doesn't know very much about that. That's why they elect people, to make those decisions. We all set forth our views, our experience and so forth, and the public elected us. So my position is that I'm going to continue to vote my conscience, what I think is best for the city of Palo Alto, until I leave office on December 31st. And I will fully support people two years from now who take the same stance when they are termed out. And if you have any, we will have at least two people termed out come the end of 2016. And if you want my assistance to come down to the, or talk to the press or whatever, I'll be glad to do so and say, you were elected for a full four-year term, and that doesn't mean that you should change your views, vote your conscience.
Councilmember Berman? Are you doing the amendment?
No, I'm not.
Gail's amendment.
Gail is.
Okay, Gail, I'm going to call on you because you need to do your amendment.
Are you calling on her now? So confused. I went to a great event with a couple of colleagues at the Art Center, and it was a joint Art Center and New Rinconada Library event, and it was fun, I got to go in support of my mom for once and not her supporting me, because she's been on the Art Center Board for quite some time. If you haven't been by the Art Center yet, check it out, it is awesome. I mean, the Rinconada Library is awesome also, and that's going to be opening up soon. I'm super excited. But what I love the most from a superficial level is the public art in between the Art Center and the Rinconada Library, this brilliance, these six different pods, I don't really even know how to describe them, I won't try to, because I won't do them justice, but check them out, they're, they're really cool. Go at night when they're lit up and you can really get the full effect. I'm super excited about them, and just wanted to let the one person in the audience from the public who's still here know. So hopefully, folks are watching on TV.
Okay, Councilmember Scharf, and then I'll return to Councilmember Price.
Thanks, just briefly. As some of you know, I serve on the Santa Clara County Cities Association Executive Board, and I just wanted to report that I was elected as the vice president of the organization for the upcoming year.
All right. Councilmember Price.
This is related to the earlier motion. I'd like to, is that what I, right? Okay. So I have reworded this, so this is my proposed motion. Direct staff to work with the HRC, other cities, and nonprofits to convene a summit of innovative homelessness programs and partnerships, including but not limited to the Santa Barbara Safe Parking Program. the Santa Barbara Safe Parking Program and the San Francisco, San Francisco Mobile Shower Units.
Do you have any comment on this? I think that we're, to direct the HRC, hang on, just a second.
Safe Parking Program.
Hang on, we can't, let's, let's take a look and see from the city attorney whether or not we can direct the HRC right now, Gail, if you don't mind.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so, so Councilmember Price, what, what you're doing tonight is asking, hopefully with the support of one or more of your colleagues, for an item to be placed on the council's agenda to consider directing staff to.
Yes.
Okay, so staff is not going to go and do this work, that can't be directed tonight.
Right, right, right. So consider directing staff, right.
Place on the council agenda a direction.
Consideration of.
Consideration of a direction.
Gail, why don't you just limit it to a general statement? When you're putting something on the agenda, you don't want to be specific. Remember, the staff is not allowed to do any work.
Right.
In, in general, it, it often is good to be more conceptual and broad when you're agendizing something like this. And I think we can retain your thoughts as notes for the item.
Okay, that's fine, I just, there were a couple of examples that I think may be worthwhile exploring, and there may be many others, but the intention is clear.
Exactly, so the broader, yeah, broader item allows for additional ideas to come forward as well.
Sometimes we have motions that are so impossibly vague, the staff doesn't have any idea, other times, try to be a little bit tighter, it's also a challenge.
Okay, we have to have support.
Point of order, city attorney, are we permitted to do motions at this point in our meeting?
No, 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 you're just, you're just agendizing something for a future discussion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, right, that's what I meant.
All you need is two, two people.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I talked about it as a motion, it's a concept.
Okay, we need to have support for this concept?
I'm hoping so.
I see that, I have another light. Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, I would like, like to support the idea of convening, or the council considering homelessness. I'd like to keep it broader, so we can focus on the payers, or the county, the state, the feds, and so on, and make sure that there is money available for the things. But I would like to support the general idea.
Okay, we don't have a general idea here, but, so, right, right now, is this, are you saying, Molly, that this is okay to consider?
So, so Madam Clerk, we're not doing a motion. What they're doing is placing, asking that an item be placed on a future agenda to discuss.
And so, so, do you want to eliminate all of that language and just put the placement of?
Yes, if I could just recommend, you know, this is an oral colleague's memo essentially, to place on a future agenda a discussion of issues related to homelessness, county services, and related matters.
Do I have the support of Councilmember Price and Councilmember Schmidt for this language?
Yes, although it's very, very general.
Yes. All right, and you just need two people to do this, is this correct? The way I understand it.
County services and related matters.
The way I understand it, we only need two people to, to put this on the agenda. Okay, Councilmember Burt.
And we will, we will do some professional adjusting of the particular language. Again, you're not, you're not wordsmithing here, you're just making an oral suggestion, and we will work with the staff to shape an agenda item that will allow a broad discussion.
And then we will incorporate that term "professional adjusting" into the lexicon.
Councilmember Burt, did you want to make any additions or changes or something?
Let me ask staff whether, as written, does this agenda item allow for discussion of enforcement mechanisms to improve enforcement of, or modifying existing regulations? This is related to homelessness.
No, we don't do enforcement related to homelessness, we do enforcement related to unlawful conduct.
Yeah, I would add vehicle dwelling, then. Would that allow it for both support programs and enforcement programs?
So, sure, so you want to talk more about vehicle dwelling?
Or at least allow the opportunity for that follow-up discussion. Yeah, vehicle dwelling was actually what I thought was going to be the primary focus of this agenda, but I'm okay to have it more broad, but it doesn't even state vehicle dwelling here.
Vehicle, vehicle dwelling needs to be in here, because that really is a response to.
I, I think it's actually preferable to the term homelessness.
Why don't you just put it after homeless as comma homeless?
Let's do it instead of homeless.
Okay, instead.
And if it includes that, does that allow us to discuss both social services initiatives to support needs as well as potential ways to support neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay.
May I make a comment?
We can't discuss this, we've put it, we're putting it on.
We can't discuss it, I think this is actually going backwards. The earlier statement, more global direction and statement or concept.
Right.
Well, but allows this, allows, you know, further discussion, this is more restrictive, as it reads, in my opinion.
So as I understand it, what we're trying to do is put a big enough tent here that allows the vehicle dwelling conversation and related homeless and service issues on the council agenda for you all to populate it with what you're interested in. We're not going to be generating lots of detail at that stage. So, I mean, personally, I think that's enough, and, and we could take some, we could do some professional adjusting to that, to be sure that it.
Homelessness was listed there, and now it's not, and it was in both our comments.
The city attorney asked to take it out.
Yes, I suggested, because, because of Council, Councilmember Burt's interest in quality of life criminal enforcement, that issue is not directly related to homelessness and, and shouldn't be. So, right, did you want to talk about other types of social services that are related to folks who are in the community who don't have homes?
So having nothing to do with vehicles. County services related homeless services.
Or related services for the unhoused.
Yeah.
These would be the.
Related services for the unhoused.
That's fine.
Good.
No, 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 keep all that in, just at the end, for the unhoused, as long as it meets legal muster, that helps.
You know, I hate to say this, we're actually getting out early tonight, and we're having a struggle with this, so.
Declare victory.
Yes, so here we go, is this, are we good now to go? Okay, it's better. Thank you, and there's nothing more tonight, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Quite a night at Stanford with, you were listening earlier to the great sports broadcast